Good evening. I am Joseph Pereira, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It is 6:00 PM on Thursday, April 17th, 2025. We are meeting at one government center in the first floor hearing room. Present to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded in a video and audio version by Fall River Government TV, Mr. Craig Salvador. If anybody here wishes to make an audio/video or combination recording of this meeting, please notify me now and I will make a public announcement of your intention. The hearing, none. Recording secretary this evening is Patty Aguirre, sitting to my immediate right. Present this evening are permanent members, Mr. John Frank, our Vice Chairman, Mr. James Culkins, our clerk, Mr. Dan DuPere, and alternate member in attendance tonight is Alexis Salmo. Also with us, sitting to my far left, is the Director of Engineering and Planning, Mr. Dan Aguirre. Patty, have all the petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested persons notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the ZBA? And Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A is amended?
Yes.
I declare the April 17th, 2025 regularly scheduled meeting of the ZBA of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including petitioners, abutters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to a petition via presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chair. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claims. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this is a zoning board of appeals. As such, the Board's authority exists person to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or government approvals may be required for the specific development, which is the subject of the petition before the zoning board this evening. The action taken by this Board has real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek legal competent counsel before filing a petition and after the decision has been made. A copy of the city ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement official. You are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18 mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board-specific matters at the end of the meeting. If you wish to make any comment, there's a sign-up sheet on the table just outside the back door. I disclose that an official copy of the City of Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the city clerk's office and that one cannot rely on the online ordinance. And we begin. There was no old business tonight, so we go directly to new business. Item number one, the applicant is Kara O'Connell, Care of Attorney Jeffrey P. Maderas, 284 River Street, MAP X1 Lot 16. The applicant has requested a special permit to allow the following: One, to operate a seasonal bar, entertainment, event, and space serving alcohol and providing food via food trucks and licensed vendors. The proposed uses would be in addition to the existing commercial boatyard storage facility. The property is located within a CMD commercial mill district. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the Board, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jeffrey Maderas. I'm an attorney here in the City of Fall River with the Law Office of Burke, Espinola, and Van Colen. I'm here to present the petition that is on the screen behind you as well as been provided to the ZBA. It is... The property is located in a commercial manufacturing district according to the zoning ordinances. If we wanted to put a restaurant there, if it was a fixed structure, we would have no problem doing it. However, based on the fact that there is boat storage there, which is approximately six to seven months a year, to utilize the space, we can't put a fixed restaurant there. So, the next best thing is a food truck and seasonal entertainment venue. So, after discussing this with the building inspector, we thought the best way to go would be to apply for a special permit. The reason why it's a special permit is because one, there's no fixed structure there, so we think we're going to do food trucks or a movable food preparation area as well as outside entertainment and liquor storage. The zoning ordinance allows a bar in the CMD district. That's why we applied for the special permit. The usage of the property as an entertainment facility or a seasonal alcohol-selling establishment wouldn't be detrimental or offensive to the neighborhood. This is a way that the property owner can utilize the large space after the boats are moved. They would be using this as the event space probably from mid to late May, after all the boats are in the water. And then it would cease being used once the boats start getting pulled out, which would be mid to late October. So therefore, we would ask that you rule favorably upon this petition. Or if there's any questions that I can ask.
Yeah, let me begin with this one regarding your basis for the special permit. So, your contention then is that since within the CMD zone, a restaurant could be allowed, a restaurant bricks and mortar?
That is correct.
So, that's... You're relying on that section of the bylaw, the use table as far as...
That is correct, and I went over that with the building inspector.
I'm going to turn to you in a minute. We should probably run through most of these questions, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I want... No, you know what? Let's talk about exactly that, if you don't mind, Dan.
So, normally we'll get specifically what section of the bylaw you're asking the Board to act through.
Under the special permit section, and then...
Right, but under the table of uses, which category via special permit are you pointing to? Is it restaurant?
No.
Because if it's restaurant, then that's allowed, because you just said restaurant.
It is allowed, but it's... So, the thing is, is after the discussion with Mr. Hathaway, figured since it's not going to be fixed structure because of the boats, and it's... So, it's primarily going to be alcohol-serving with... It was going to be in a trailer. So, somewhat like if you've been to Cisco Brewers...
I've permitted, so yeah, I've been there before.
Where they have the metal storage containers.
Yep.
It's going to be on the same idea. That's what it basically is, but then we want to offer bars, seasonal music, so that... And then food would be not prepared by Ms. O'Connell. It would be by a food truck. So, the food truck could be anywhere else. So, that's why he pushed this down to bar, because food is not prepared on...
Right, that's... So, if you're pointing to the bar category, which is allowed by a special permit...
That is correct.
It clearly states, "but which is not licensed to prepare or serve food."
Right, so...
So, is it bar that you're... where you're not serving food? Or is... I don't...
So, that's...
We're going to need clarification about what you're asking the Board to act on.
So, technically, we would prefer that it's a special permit as like a bar, a seasonal bar.
Right, but that's... But you have to get clarification from the zoning enforcement officer with what section you're here for, so that we can act appropriately. Because there may be uses here that we don't even need to discuss it. They're just allowed by right.
That's...
So, we're trying to limit the amount of relief needed or denied or granted by this Board. So, we're going to have to get that part of it cleared out.
I'm not even sure if having the food trucks there as victualers who are licensed...
Yep.
I'm not even sure you need to be permitted for that.
Right, I don't know either.
So, I don't...
What happens is sometimes the building department here gives a denial based upon the information that's submitted. I just want to make sure that what we're acting on is accurate, because this is substantial.
Because if food truck doesn't even appear at the site, we still want to be able to serve alcohol. So, that's why Mr. Hathaway said if that's the case, you would fall under the bar category.
Well, you've got to pick a category. You can't just say, "Today, I want to operate under this category. Tomorrow, I want to operate under this one." So, if there are multiple sections of relief that are needed, multiple sections of relief need to be requested.
Well, Ms. O'Connell just said we wouldn't serve alcohol unless a food truck was there. So, they want food trucks to be on-site.
So, if you can't get a food truck there, then you'll be serving no alcohol?
Wait. Yes, actually. We've actually also been approached by numerous people that would like to be the permanent food truck there seasonally. So, I don't think we would have that problem where we wouldn't have food there. We don't want... We don't want to be the last stop. We don't want people just coming and drinking. We want to have food.
No, I understand that, but...
So, we would not serve just alcohol if there was not food there.
But the zoning enforcement official needs to be clear with what relief you're being here sent for.
Right.
Because if this gets appealed or denied or approved, we have to make sure that everything is done correctly.
Of course.
So, I think a further conversation with the building inspector needs to take place, so that way either his denial or your request is not so open-ended and fairly finite. Because when this Board votes, and if they do approve it, it will be condition-laden, and we want to make sure that you can live with those conditions at the same time. So, you don't want to leave and then find out we missed something and now I have to go back. That's all I have to offer on that part of it, anyway.
Counsel? Oh, I mean, that was kind of a question. I mean, it's out there.
So, as you just...
Go ahead.
As you just heard Ms. O'Connell say, that we want to serve food and alcohol at the same time. So, based on what conditions that you bring forth, if you are inclined to go with a special permit, if you want to put a restriction that, you know, you have to serve some form of food, there have been food trucks that have already approached Ms. O'Connell, and can't disclose who it is, but it's...
Right, but I don't... Again, I'll read Section E again. "Bar, saloon, or other establishment where alcoholic beverages are sold and consumed, but which is not licensed to prepare or serve food." I just want to make sure that we can do both of these through a special permit and that a variance isn't needed. So, that's what we need clarification from, from the building inspector. I understand what you're saying you want to do, but I want to make sure that you are requesting the right relief and that the building inspector agrees, because it's not very clear.
I think, and I'm going to be the last guy to give out legal advice, each of those victualers are licensed.
Licensed themselves, correctly.
So, the establishment, the property is not licensed.
Correct.
The servers are coming on-site. And I think that's their direction, that's where they need to go.
And let's hope, right, yep.
And could this fall under G, which is commercial recreational facility outdoors?
It could, no, it could, but then...
You still have the alcohol.
Well, including stadium, stadium alcohol.
And I looked at that. So, when you look at G, G is not allowed by a special permit. So, that would require them to file for a variance. And that's what I'm saying, there are different sections in the ordinance that may require different types of relief. So, we just want to get it right. So, if relief from G is required, then we want to make sure that we're discussing and dealing with G.
Who's applied for on the application?
Just a special permit.
Just special permit.
But it doesn't say under what, under what, or where?
It doesn't say 86.
No.
That's my hangup in going forward. I mean, we can... We can go all the way through and get the whole presentation, but what we're missing is what we're voting on. And that's the point. And I'm sure that some of the folks that are here tonight are here for this. So, I'd like to hear it through, but we still... We're either going to have to table it at the end of this.
I think the nuts and bolts can still be discussed.
Yep.
And then determine the best way to proceed. But I think the applicant should be afforded to know what are the nuts and bolts concerns that they'll need to address. The hearing is already open.
Yeah, it's open, so we may as well go. The season, let's take that up. So, you're saying May through October, potentially?
It would be on the same idea as the Tiptsy Seagull. So, where most of their parking comes from when the boats go in the water. So, as when I discussed this with Ms. O'Connell, the boats start moving into the water beginning of May. Probably some already... Depends on the weather, but...
But I want to... We need a set, earliest, latest.
So, the earliest would be what, May 1st?
No, June 1st.
There you go, June 1st.
June 1st.
Okay.
Because what's important is on your site plan, you've shown X amount of parking spaces that you meet the requirements. So, the spaces shown on that plan need to be striped. And you can't open unless every one of those spaces is made available and unobstructed by boats or things of that nature. So, again, once you lock into a plan, we want to make sure that you can live with that plan. So, you're saying June 1st?
Yes.
To?
October 1st.
To October 1st. And I'm assuming that if there are boats that would be in the way where you need spaces, you will then have other room to move those boats?
Yes, we have ample room.
For the season, right?
We have ample room.
Okay.
It all depends on the weather for a given season, right? If it rains through May, there's still going to be boats sitting there, so...
They go in even if it rains.
So, you're saying June 1st to October 1st?
Yes.
What would you anticipate for hours of operations? We'd have to set those two.
We anticipate closing at 8:00, except on Sundays would be 6:00.
How about opening?
At noon.
Noon? And would this be... Would you be looking for this as seven days a week or just weekend?
You know, we haven't really thought... Probably seven days a week.
So, Monday through Saturday would be noon to 8, you said?
Yes.
And then Sunday, noon to 6? And this is something that I brought up a couple of weeks ago and did speak to the planning director briefly. Police and fire, have they been made aware of this application? And are they going to have any special needs? Are you going to have to have a fireman on... There's no building, but are you going to have to have somebody on duty? And also the traffic coming in from the...
Well, we really haven't discussed it with the police and fire because we were going to address that at the liquor license application. But however, it depends on if you use a tent, then that would fall under the building code, which would probably require exit signs. I don't think police and fire have to be there. It's not a paid detail situation. I know fire trucks can get down there because they can access by Clark Street off of North Main Street.
As far as the access for the facility, would it be Collins, Clark, or both?
We would probably prefer that it be Collins because there's less impact there. Because there's no residences on Collins.
Yeah, because there's that kind of narrow spot that comes in off Clark, right? Is that actually somebody's property that's...
On Clark or Collins?
On Clark. Will you come in that end?
When you come in on Clark Street, there's residents on both sides.
Yeah.
Right up to the verge. When you come in on Collins, there are no residents.
Chairman Diers, do you think you can get a letter from police and fire that they feel access for proper emergency vehicles is available?
I can't.
Yeah. Because, I mean, you can't limit how people will get there. There are public ways, so you can't dictate what street someone uses to get there as far as the public goes.
You feel that the 52 spaces that you designed for this are going to be adequate?
Meets the bylaw, yeah.
Right. But we're talking 200. Your capacity in that patio, tiki-bar area, you're foreseeing is no more than 200, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm just saying that if you get a big party, you're going to have more than 52 vehicles.
Well, but the boats are not going to be in the yard. So, the wall...
You're going to climb the seawall if you're coming in by boat. This isn't a Tiptsy. So, you could have then an overflow area up in the north end of the site where the boats are usually up on stands?
Yes.
You could show that on the plan? We want to make sure that we don't have parking in the streets is the intention, like has happened at other locations in the city.
Parking in the streets not going to be encouraged at all?
I know not encouraged, but...
We will make sure we have overflow.
Okay. And we'll show it on the plan and it'll be designated as overflow parking. And understand that if people park in the street, then you'll be in noncompliance with the variance and it can be revoked. Because the last thing we need is to have everyone calling the traffic department and the police department and having to deal with parking on the street and then other businesses not being able to access their properties because they can't even get by with vehicles parked on the street.
Absolutely. We've been a good neighbor for over 15 years.
Right, but you have them run a tiki-bar and food truck event, right?
We will continue to be a good neighbor.
It's a matter of dotting the i's, Kara, that's what it comes down to.
It's not timed yet.
We'll get there. We'll get there. Public comment, when they're done and my board is done. Threw me off there, Mr. President, I owe you one. I'll be there Tuesday. Anyway, the... So, the spaces, that primary area, 52 lots, the 52-car lot, that does have to be striped. It does have to be marked. If we've got an overflow area that goes into that gravel area that's to the north, which is usually a boat area, does that type of overflow have to be marked? I don't believe so.
It's up to you, no, because they're meeting the requirement of the bylaw. So, that's, you know, they're providing X number of spaces, right? Again, I'm trying not to lead them in a direction that they're going to fail. So, if they have room for overflow, then show an overflow parking area on gravel. And then when somebody's parked on the street, the building inspector can ask why isn't the overflow parking area opened and why aren't they parking there, right? So, it's just... We're trying to set somebody up to succeed.
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Chairman, so I just asked Ms. O'Connell, the gravel, the existing gravel surface that is hot-packed, so that could be also utilized as an overflow area if the 52 spaces are taken.
And where...
To the north.
To the north, that's what I thought. Where you usually have boats on stands up in that area. Okay, that makes sense. That's what I thought. And that is... Yeah, you've got traffic flow through that area anyway, so that makes sense. Anybody else on the Board, questions, comments, concerns?
Concern I have is that the granting of a special variance or a special permit requires that two conditions be met. And the first one, which is that it is not substantially more detrimental to the area. And would you amplify your views on the increased traffic into the area and how this is not more detrimental to the area?
Well, Mr. Culkins, I would say that based on the district, since it's a commercial manufacturing district, they could manufacture boats, they could manufacture any kind of product, and they could have 18-wheelers going in there every day, all day long. So, with regard to detrimental, like we explained, we're hoping to get most of the traffic to go down Collins. And that's where the signage will probably be. But this facility or this site is on the waterfront. There's not many places on the waterfront that could be used in this way other than the south end of the city. We have waterfront areas down on DeVall Street that are mostly parks. So, on the north end, there is really no type of situation where we can do this only on this spot. So, would it be detrimental? Probably during the work week, I wouldn't suppose that there would be tons of cars going in and out of there. Maybe on Saturday and Sunday, when they do have entertainment, I would say there would be some more cars. But is it overly detrimental to the neighborhood based on the fact that it's a manufacturing district? I would say no. I hope that answers your question.
Anything else?
How many boat slips do you have that people are in and out of?
32.
32, and now they're parking for those 32?
Yes.
Where do they park?
They park on the south end of the property, near the boat slips.
Can we get those...
It's not showed on this?
No, I was hoping we can get that shown on the plan.
So, if you... There... It's tough to show. So, there is parking in front of those two buildings. Behind the office, there is ample parking. And down at the side of the building, there's ample parking.
But we can get that shown on the plan?
Yes.
Okay, that would help.
And you're planning on having dock access for this along the... Where the seawall is, where it says existing seawall?
In the future.
So, you'd go to the state, get...
Chapter 91.
That's not in our purview. Okay, anyone else on the Board before we go to the public? Is there anyone in attendance this evening that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? We'll go with you first.
Can I take my husband?
Just identify yourself, please, with your address.
Cindy Costa, 3216 North Main Street. So, we are on the corner where you go down to...
Collins Street.
Collins Street. And I have been out of work for three years. We had to move there because his grandmother was sick, his grandmother. So, I'm home all the time. There's not much traffic that goes down there, so... Yeah, I see everything. And I walk my dog down the hill, so I don't see...
Well, if this passes, you can get your dog a drink.
No, he's sick unfortunately.
So, let me clarify. I was going to ask the question, are you in favor or in opposition?
Oh, definitely in favor.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You had me worried for a minute. Anything else?
No.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. President? Joe?
What's your address, Joe?
So, I am also in favor of this project. Full disclosure, I keep my boat down there. I've known these people for about 28 years, and they were an excellent operation there. If there's a problem, there's... I've never heard of a problem with any neighbors, anything that's going on. The proposal, when she told me about it, I thought it was a great idea. It's what we're looking for down the waterfront. It's what our city is trying to do all over the waterfront area. Getting to your clarification about parking on the street. That first street right there, River Street, so that's her house. And when I go down there, I park in the street.
Right.
There's a lot of people, but that's... There's no other neighbors there. If you're saying you want any parking in the street, when I go to my boat, it's easy for me sometimes just to park right in the street. There's plenty of parking.
I understand that. And I'm not worried about you parking in the street for when you go down to your boat. I'm worried about the 200 people that are going to go to this event center and them parking on the street.
But there's not going to be 200 people parking on the street with the parking that she provided. And then there's plenty of parking. My point is, there's no other residents on that street. It's a street that has...
I'm not worried about residences and the effects on them and their parking. I'm worried about the streets being lined... You've been down Ferry Street.
Which street are you talking about?
Any one of them.
Okay.
Because there will be cars parked all the way to North Main Street if this place is that successful. And I hope it is very successful. So, I want to make sure that we can accommodate those people on the property. That's all, I just want to make sure that they're not...
There's two of the main streets that you get down there.
Yeah, Clark and Collins, yeah.
So, I was just saying that which street were you trying to say you don't want parking on?
All of them. I don't want, I don't want, I don't want these occupants that are coming, the increase in parking. I don't want overflowing onto the water streets. Because then as soon as cars park on each side, and an ambulance might need to get down there, or...
But there's still road fatalities. Let's say, I'm in front of a road.
And that's, and that's what I asked Attorney Madares to go find out and make sure that police and fire feel comfortable with this operation happening. And that they'll be able to provide emergency vehicle access, no matter what happens.
I just didn't know if you're gonna exclude parking. Like I live across the street from BCC.
Yep.
There's no parking on one side of the street there.
Correct.
Why would they wanna put no parking? It is ample room for parking, but still, yeah, I just wanna make sure you're not gonna exclude.
No, no, we, we don't have the ability to do that. That would have to go through the traffic department and, and actually, I think it needs to go through the city council to put no parking on the street, so.
Correct.
There you go.
I don't wanna tie the hands.
No, no. It's, it's, it's not that we wanna remove what's parking is there. We just wanna make sure that, that these new occupants of the new business aren't filling up the streets. That's all.
And I agree with you. And I don't think they would want that either.
Well, I know they would, but...
No, and that, and that's just it. They, they wouldn't. So, you know, they know that, so we're thinking of it because we don't want complaints coming in against a new establishment, that type of thing. Think it through right up front and be able to cover it, so.
And we can, and then when we say, we asked the questions, our, our questions were answered, they addressed our comments. So then it, it can't be, you didn't even ask a question about parking or parking on the street.
That's why I'm trying to get clarification. I understand what you're talking about.
And, and if, if the plan could show where it says existing gravel, where you're talking about overflow parking, we definitely should probably see.
Yeah.
You could probably add another thirty, forty spots with a little better layout, some proposed layout.
Yep, can control it.
I can show you where the existing gravel spot is.
Oh, yeah, no, you see, it's just, it's just to have it on the plan. If we wanna approve something, it should be on the plan.
And I, and I agree with you. But that's all I have to say, is that it's a important project.
No, and I appreciate that, Counsel. No, we're just talking about like for that overflow area, obviously it's not gonna be striped, it's on gravel. But that can be marked off cones, et cetera, et cetera. So. That's, you know.
I think it's more important to show where, like Mr. Camaro, when he wants to go get on his boat or into his boat, that he has somewhere to park as well.
Two times in the summer that I get to go down there when my son's not using it.
But somebody's down there, but somebody's going down there to get on. So we wanna make sure that you have a home to park as well. Cause there's, there are, there are multiple things. If this was a vacant piece of land and this was the use, then of course it's much easier, right? But there, there's a lot of moving parts to this.
So Mr. Aguirre, just curious, as far as the permit they're looking for today,
Yep.
you don't think it would be feasible to get permission for that? Cause it's gonna lock their hands and flowers and other means of providing?
No, because it, we technically don't know what relief, where we actually have to provide. And we need a revised plan to see these other, these other items that we're discussing.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else to speak in, in favor and support? Sir?
Just one more last question, sorry. So will you be tabling this to get more?
That'll be up, that'll be up to the applicant, whether they want us to vote on it or whether they wanna table it.
Sir?
May I drop the board? I live on thirty-two sixteen North Main Street.
Okay.
I've lived there twenty-eight years of my life. Never had a problem with the O'Connell's, never had a problem with traffic, never had a problem with people parking on, on the hills or any obstructions anywhere, anything like that. I think it'd be a great access, a great thing for the community. There's not really much to do down in the north end of the city. And you got barracks, alehouse. I mean, there's not really anything to do on the waterfront down there. Everything's private property or owned by the train tracks or owned by the city. I think it'd be a great idea to have people in the community of the north that'd be able to go and do something in the neighborhood and interact with the neighbors that you've probably never even met before because there's nothing to do down, you know? That's about it.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else speaking favor? Sir?
Chairman, I've been dealing with the O'Connell's for twenty or thirty years. They run an excellent business there. I've had boats there. I dock my boats there. They run a tight ship, very professional, and I'm sure they will abide by any rules or regulations that this board puts forth on them. The father ran the business for many years. Kara, when she took over, does an excellent job. Everybody respects that area, and I think would only enhance the atmosphere in the north end of that city was something for people to do. And I think she'll do a great job at, at what she wants to do.
And again, just for the record, your name and address?
Bob Sariva, two fifteen Franklin Street.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just so everybody understands, this permit is not granted to a person, okay? It's, it's granted to a piece of property. So as soon as this property gets sold, if it ever gets sold, it's been in the family forever, but at some point in time, it may not be. And then we may be dealing with someone else, but that permit runs with the piece of land. And we, we all agree that the O'Connell's run a fantastic business. We think this is a great use. But we still have to do our due diligence and make sure that it's being done well. That's all. Because it, it could potentially fall into someone else's hands that may not have the best intentions and may abuse the overall permit that, that they, they could be granted. That's it.
Point well taken. Anyone else to speak in favor? Oh, sorry.
Jessica Side, as a resident of Fifty Clock Street. I am all for it, but I do have major concerns with parking, and parking is very limited as it is right now. But I am all for it. I would love to walk over there, have a drink, and go home. But parking is bad. Like, it's just tight on Clock Street, Collins Street, you can't park on that.
But the good news is you'll be walking and not taking up one of the parking spaces.
No, no, you're taking up the ones on the house.
I understand.
That's the problem. In the bridge, you can't park on that.
No, and we're not trying to be, we're not trying to be flippant. We're trying to work out that parking thing. That's, you know, we spend a lot of time on parking and we're trying to make sure of exactly that, so. Last thing Kara wants is the police guy showing up saying, hey, that car's in the street, it's gotta move. Because that always shows up somewhere on the internet. Okay, thank you. Anyone else in favor? Yes?
Jeff Preve. I'm not from Fall River. I'm from two-two-six Seabou Avenue in Swansea.
Swansea.
But I've kept my boats at the O'Connell's for over twenty years. And the idea of adding extra amenities to their is, I'm all for that. And I'm looking forward to enjoying that. I've even bought a little small whale or so I can fit in a horse.
Okay, thank you. What was your name again, sir?
Jeff Preve.
Spell the last name? Can you spell the last name for us?
G R E V E.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Yes?
Hi, I'm Valencia K. I've lived at thirty-two eleven North Main Street for about fifteen years. And I do brought my dogs down there, so it'll give me something to do while I have the dogs. But it's, it's always been in kinda like unclean place, so having something down there to keep that area clean, clear, and available for, not necessarily the dogs, but just for anybody to be able to walk down there, sit down, watch the water, whatever. It would be an awesome thing to do.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? Harry Nunn, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Attorney David Assad. I'm an attorney licensed to practice in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I maintain office at three-twenty-six Pine Street in the city of Fall River. I represent Mr. Arthur Hancock, the owner of three-hundred River Street, which is a direct abut to the north of the property. The business plan that we've heard about this evening, Mr. Hancock has no objections to. The things that brought me out this evening was the petition itself, in that as it was advertised, it was showing that it was at two-eighty-four River Street. Two-eighty-four River Street is a residence. The property address of this particular project is one-eighty River Street. The assessor's map and lot is correct, X-one lot sixteen. I would submit that the board should probably do some action to say that you've complied with chapter forty-eight, section eleven, that proper notice was given. And people knew that it wasn't the residence, that it was the O'Connell Boat Yard. One of the other issues that showed up on the application that were causing me some concern was that the applicant is Kara O'Connell individually. The property is owned by Captain Joseph J. O'Connell Company, Inc. And I've heard lots of comments this evening about what a great job Kara did as president, does, as president treasurer, secretary, and director. But it's not Captain O'Connell, Captain Joseph J. O'Connell Company, Inc., that's doing this particular project. It's Kara O'Connell individually. So I suspect that she's going to have a lease agreement with the corporation to run this particular business at this location. So I just was looking for some clarification. Mr. Culkins was absolutely correct that the special permit issue requires that standard to make the determination that it's not gonna be substantially more detrimental than the existing activity. The existing activity there is the marina. The marina's there as a pre-existing non-conforming use under the ordinance. Mr. Hancock's biggest concern is that access to his property is usually through Clock Street. He has a working machine shop. He has a working wharf. There are eighteen, there are eighteen-wheelers that come up and down Clock Street, and if there's parking on River Street or near Clock Street, it becomes a problem. Police are called for the purposes of moving the cars so they can happen. If the proposal was granted by this particular board, I would ask that maybe some signage be put that O'Connell's Boat Yard is to the south if you're coming off Clock Street, so they know where they're going and they're not hung up at three-hundred River Street going onto Hancock Marina. With those, those are the only really objections, and the only reason why I'm here this evening is to stop the interference with the three-hundred River Street. And that the parking around Clock Street and River Street, that has been a problem in the past, that we've dealt with the traffic department. And I agree with Mr. Aguirre on that it's not so much the operation of O'Connell. It's when this takes off and this becomes a venue in the north end of the city that is going to be parking along River Street, along North Main Street. And that's something that I think that needs to be addressed. I understand that there's overflow parking, but as much as we think people will cooperate and do it the right thing, doesn't necessarily happen. The hours of operation were fine. The, the seasonal June first to October worked. Really no objection. It was just the procedural elements that brought Mr. Hancock out, thinking that he was gonna have the activity in the house next door to him. Other than that, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I can respond a little bit. Jeff, Attorney Madares, did you ever end up figuring out the address thing with the assessor's office? The assessor's office had multiple parcels combined for billing purposes. And when the plan first came in, actually the house off the property south was numbered one-eighty on the plan. The house was labeled two-eighty-four.
It is.
The assessor's office couldn't figure out, or thought they had it figured out, but we did know that we had the right map and lot number. And we felt comfortable with, with moving forward on that. So I don't know if that street number has actually been resolved?
No, it hasn't at this point. We did take pictures of the, the house to the south.
Yep.
It is one-eighty.
Okay.
There's no number on two-eighty-four, and the house is way off the, off the road.
Right.
So, but after doing the research, I can see where the nu, where the billing emerged, and that's how the confusion is.
Yep.
But when police and fire, if there was, if a call came in that said O'Connell's Boat Yard, they know where O'Connell's Boat Yard is. So I do have to go to the assessors and ask them to give us a number. And it would be the number that was on the original petition, which was one-ninety River Street.
Okay. Well, one-eighty was what was on the original, but, but it won't be one-eighty if the house, other house is one-eighty. It's gonna be in between one-eighty and two-eighty-four, somewhere in between. We'll have a new address. As far as the ownership component, the owner's listed as Captain Joseph J. O'Connell Company, Inc. And that is on the application. It is signed by Kara O'Connell as president and treasurer. The applicant is Kara O'Connell individually, and as I previously stated, any relief granted is for the property. So the applicant could be Mickey Mouse, and, and that would have no bearing on whether or not this petition was granted or not. I mean, it runs with the property and on, on the merits. But, but I do understand the, the questioning of that. The address thing is still, you know, up in the air. To dot i's and cross t's, the, the board could make a determination or, or vote that having the assessor's map and number correct in, in light of the errors in the assessor's department, that notification was, was given properly. And we actually went so far, if you remember, to add abutters that are over in front of one-eighty, and so across the street as well. So we went, we went beyond with the original notification, so. And the abutter is here this evening as well with, with legal representation, so I think we're, I think we're okay.
There is gonna be, to answer Attorney Assad's question, there is gonna be a lease between the property owner and the, the corporation that's gonna run the, the area. We've already established the corporation as Danny's Dockside. That's gonna be the, the name of the, the facility, as well as the name that we're gonna be seeking the alcohol liquor license. So, Mr. Aguirre, I think based on the, the relief, Kara is not going to be licensed to prepare food. So it's gonna be the food truck operators. Mr. Pereira had even indicated that each food truck has to have their own license. They're the ones who go to safe serve programs. The facility itself is going to be tip certified with regard to the alcohol that they serve.
That's a licensing thing, not, not a zoning thing.
So I'd say that we would fall under the special permit where it doesn't require to come back for a variance. We'd like to get this approved for the season. That's why we're coming now, and everything's been done. Cause if it gets pushed to May, we're waiting a twenty-year appeal period, then it's further down, which we might not be able to utilize the facility this year.
Understood.
It's gonna take a while to get through the A B C C. I have an application that's been there now for three months, and it has been acted upon.
So even if you file now, you're probably still won't get it?
Who knows?
Right. So we can only worry about what we can worry about?
So it's different steps, and that's what we're trying to...
Exactly. And, and there, you know, there, there will be water health issues you've gotta contend with, and, and there are plenty of permitting issues. You'll have, potentially, you may have construction permitting through the Conservation Commission if we're changing any surfaces or uses, things of that nature. We have to look at the existing chapter ninety-one license. Are you impeding public access? So there are so many other things beyond this.
So going to the ownership issue?
I don't know if we ask, if the rest of people in opposition, if you wanna...
You're right. Anyone else in opposition? Yes?
So my name is Cynthia. Last name, for all intents and purposes, O'Connell. This lovely lady is my cousin, and my goddaughter. This lovely lady is also my cousin. My dad and their dad, our grandfather, are the original owners of this property. It was run by my dad, their dad. There is in fact residential houses on that street on one of them. In between one-eighty and two-eighty-four is two-eighty, and if you zoom in on that map, you will see my house. I'm literally caught between a rock and a hard place because this is my family, this is my family. I want nothing more than to make them all happy. At the same time, this proposed bar, entertainment facility, whatever it ends up being, as you stated, something happens to them, it gets sold. I don't know what I'm living with now at this point in time, regardless of what their plan is, what they're hoping for. If you zoom in, you will see my house on that street. It looks like there's a distance. I'm not even sure where they're proposing to put this container. We have discussed it. I don't know if it's on the map. So I can't see where it is in relation to my house.
Yeah, it would be further into the site where the, where the containers are, along the water's edge, right, right there.
So where that container is, is immediately in my backyard. It looks like there's somewhat of a distance in between, but that's a topographical map. And technically, a lot of that distance is a cliff. I can throw a rock and hit any boat in, in that area. I can almost throw a rock and hit the water. So that entertainment facility slash bar, if anyone chooses to turn around, will be looking directly into my pool, directly into my backyard. I will have absolutely no privacy. I will be subject to whatever hours they're open, I will be listening to music. As this lady's in the back so nicely stated, I already have issues with parking. Collins Street, River Street, Clock Street, none of them are legal with. They don't. They're not double lane. They're, they're not wide enough to have two-way traffic. They're all one car passing at one time. Where this nice lady lives in the apartments on Clock Street, I already get their overflow parking and my designated parking areas. So I'm very concerned about the traffic flow when I... When I step out of my house, because I'm not stepping onto a legal sidewalk, I step out of my house, down my stairs, and into the street. Into the street. I have to cross that street to get into my vehicle, because there's, there's no parking on the entire road. Additionally, I have guests at my house frequently. I have eight grandchildren under the age of six. I don't want to risk them late on a Sunday afternoon, walking off my step, either my front door or my back door, into the street and getting tagged by someone who has just been served at a bar at the Boatyard. I understand Joe and a few of the other people here see it as a good thing. I understand I have spoken with Kara and Aaron both, and they have assured me of some of the, I'll say precautions they're going to put into place, but even with the discussion we had, that's not where, when we discussed it, that's not where they were telling me the bar was going to be located. I was under the assumption it was going to be on the property behind 284, which is their home. I've lived down this street for 46 years with these two women and their brothers and sisters. I love them dearly. Their dad was my uncle. I lived next door to my dad for 46 years of my life. This has been my home. This is not what I want to see my home. I know it's, it's hard for me to say this because I know it's what they want to do, but the noise is going to affect my quality of life. My privacy is gone. Is security going to be an issue all winter long? They have problems with people breaking into those boats and storage in the wintertime. I don't, I don't know if they're going to have police officers there, but I'm very concerned about my privacy, my safety, my security. It's a very isolated area, and now it's going to be open to whomever wants to walk the dog, drive, whatever. Not, not that it matters, but a lot of people have walked their dog, and I have to pick up the waste after the dog, because I don't get that. I, I don't want to add to those problems that we already have, and I, I just, I want to make them happy. I'm between a rock and a hard place, because at the same time, I don't want it to affect my quality of night, life, and it is going to be a very negative quality of life for me. So as I said, if, if you want to zoom into the map, for Joe to say there's no other houses on that street, that's not true. Joe, you know that. You've worked in my backyard.
I'm talking where her house is, not the other residence.
Huh?
I'm talking where her house is, not the other street.
But it's still the street. You said there are no other residents on that street, and that is not a true statement. There's two other houses on that street. And as I also said, neither, none of them in that whole U shape provide for two-way traffic. So I think that's pretty much all I have to say. Like I said, I worry about the noise, I worry about the security, I worry about privacy. For my quality of life, seven days a week, I'm going to have no privacy. I'm going to have people driving up and down the street, walking, music, you know. I know they're saying they're going to put parameters in place, but what happens if it does really well, and now you want to push that envelope a little bit further and a little bit further? I'm going to have sometimes 40, 50 people slamming it open, their car goes in my backyard, watching what I'm doing in my backyard. I'll have absolutely no privacy. Or, or, or safety quality of life. I wonder how it's going to affect my security, living on a very secluded street that's not open to anybody who wants to drive down there. It's literally my backyard. I can stand in my backyard and talk to Kara. So it's going to be very, very, very close. So I do expect Kara overflow, but if you'd like to ask me any questions, that's fine. We can zoom in on that thing or whatever, and we'll get to questions. I know also Jonathan has worked on and off of them for many years, so I don't know if he has, what do you call it, a paddle in the fight, a dog in the fight, whatever.
Well, I mean, it, it, so your address is 284, correct?
My address is 280.
280. The house in the middle.
The small house up front.
It's not small, but.
Well, no. In comparison to.
I go by it against it.
To the boatyard, it's, it's small.
And even for me to walk from my house to my unattached garage, I have to walk down the middle of the road. I have no sidewalk. So even to back my truck out of my garage, to walk to my garage, and I don't have legal representation, representation like Mr. Hancock has, but.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the woman's house.
He is right, there are a lot of 18-wheelers that will literally have to back all the way in front of my house.
Can I say something?
To back down to his property. You're next. Stop.
Hold.
I really want to make you guys happy.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Well, I mean, can we speak to the distance between the back of the house and the edge of your property? Because I'm familiar with the terrain there, so.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure over the years, you've all read plans, and you can see based on where 280 is, even though the, the plan does not have a dimension that runs towards the Totten River, you can see that the first dimension of 60 feet, I'd say from where the tiki bar is to where River Street, that's in excess of over 100 yards. Plus the elevation of the plan shows.
To the street itself, yes, but not to my backyard.
Excuse me. So with regard to the elevation, you can see that her property is 30 feet above the tiki bar, so she just made claims that people are going to be looking into her backyard. I'd say they had to have vision of Superman to do that.
That's absolutely not true.
Basically, the, the tiki bar, you can see, is going to be over 100 yards away.
I actually have a picture on my phone that this gentleman here took from the Boatyard about where the tiki bar is, with being able to look in my bedroom window.
Well.
We can argue that point, or my.
I'm not going to argue with you. I'm looking at, I'm looking at a, a plan, the same one that's up there, which happens to have grade on it. Your house ostensibly is probably at about 35 feet, and over, just over the line into the Captain O'Connell property is at 10 feet. That's a 25, you're 25 feet higher at your house.
Yes.
Than the back of that, correct?
Yes, which is why you can be where the bar is and look right into my house, because it is that elevated.
So if your house is here, and somebody's standing here, you have to look uphill at your house, correct?
Yes, and it's totally unobstructed, no, no trees, no nothing.
You can go look at it.
It's a very clear view.
You can go look at it.
You can go look at it.
I did. I just didn't look at the house.
From the, right, but for the specific instance, you know.
Yep.
You'll be able to ride my window and see me watching TV.
That still is a considerable distance from, from your house. Where does your pool sit on this, on this map?
It sits approximately, I, I can't really tell where the drop-off starts on that map, but it's probably 15, 10 feet from the house is a 29-foot pool, so beyond my pool, where you would actually fall off of that cliff, is less, it's from handy, me to you.
Your pool is that close to the Boatyard?
It's that close to the cliff, and at the bottom of that cliff are boats. I actually have pictures on my phone, if anybody wants to get them afterwards.
I'm going to have to take a drive-by and take a look at it myself. I understand, I understand your concern, and I appreciate you coming out.
Yes, and for me, it's not necessarily a yes or a no. I just have concerns that I, I need to, that I feel are not quite accurately being answered.
We're asking them to be answered.
We're asking them, and I'm, I deal with. Elsa?
Yes.
Okay. I deal with plans all day, every day. I'm looking at some pretty big distances here. This is what I do. So I'm, I'm not telling you you're wrong, and I know that sight, line of sight perspective is different. I may ring your doorbell to go onto your property, but I can do it all from, from the Captain O'Connell's property and look at it that way, and see what I can see. I, I understand your concern, but I don't know if you'd like to address.
As I've already stated, Mr. Chairman, the claims that she's making based on the plan, it just doesn't seem like they add up, to say where you could stand in the, at the tiki bar and look into her window watching TV. I would say it's a, the graphic scale, one inch equals 40 feet. You can, as I heard Attorney, Mr. Frank say, it's over 250 feet away, approximately. So that's.
So do you have documentation from, from a noise expert or a sightline expert to, to back up your claim?
We have.
I mean, she can hire the same as well.
This is the first time we're hearing about this?
No, no, I understand, but that's, that's the purpose of this process, right? So it's not running and getting a permit. It's come in, you have a discussion, you have people raise concerns, and then we address those concerns. So I'm just.
Well, and also because I am up on the hill.
No, I understand completely, but again, I'm not a sound expert either.
I can hear the message from the call.
Right, I understand.
So I was just talking to my client. Seems as though she visited Kara and Aaron, saying that she wouldn't oppose this petition if they gave her a piece of the action.
This is the zoning board of appeals.
I understand.
So let's, let's, let's stop, and let's keep the facts that are under the purview of the zoning board of appeals. I, I think you know that, but not.
I understand.
So you're still standing, you're looking for an answer.
No, I just didn't know if anybody was going to ask me any questions.
No. I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at plans stamped by an engineer who I happen to know. So I have to believe the plans are correct, because we've seen the work before. If, if it looks horrendously different, it doesn't mean that it's any closer than it is on the plans. I mean, and, and that's, that's that. I, I hear you, I hear your concern. From what I'm seeing on paper, in my eye, I'm not visualizing what, what you're seeing is, is the situation. You know what I'm saying? I'm not trying to be contrary.
No, I understand that, and as was mentioned, you know, I, I invite you to go look if you feel the need to, and everyone here is right, Kara, Aaron. I see them every day. We're neighbors, like I said, they're my cousins. We've lived side by side for years, very class act. Even, we've spoken, they have taken some of my concerns into consideration, but again, I also want to.
Which is good, and thank you, it's good to hear that.
And make them be known in front of the board, but, you know, I, I just, I just do have concerns, and this was the place to.
Okay.
Voice them. I don't doubt that they will not do a good job. I do believe that's true, but, you know, I have concerns, and I wanted to just give them, because.
Thank you.
You know, this traffic and noise and those type of concerns.
Is the land at all conducive to any kind of a barrier between the properties?
There, there was some trees. It's my understanding that she cut them down to improve her view of the water.
But also, they cleared them one year, so we have both taken care of that area between.
So the tree is shown on this plan out there, that tree line?
Along the buffer.
Well, it's, it's deceiving, because it's on a cliff.
No, no, I understand.
A lot of the trees are down at the bottom of the hill, and I just get the tips, but also part of living there is you want that water view, so there have been.
I understand. I, I just want to make sure that the plan is factually correct, so are there arches there?
I can't tell with, I can't.
You wouldn't know what a tree line is, but it's the little bubbles lines that you see running along the line.
I actually, I've been in construction 25 years, I read blueprints.
There you go. Do you see the tree line?
I know what tree line looks like, but thank you.
So.
Yes, but it's not actually showing.
But again, I think if somebody, if, if the board decides that they want to go look at it, then, then they can make a determination regarding that portion of the thing. You raised others about parking and all of those things.
Yes, the clearing of the trees is kind of always an ongoing thing, because it backs up to that shed.
We don't regulate clearing of trees.
Yeah.
That's a good thing, too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, they're hearing none. On the matter of ownership, Kara, I'm going to assume, and you did, because I just read it, you signed as president and treasurer of Captain Joseph O'Connell. So that's fine. It may have been, the problem is probably in our advertising, because it should have been under the name of the property.
It's usually listed under the applicant.
Yeah.
All our advertising is by the applicant. And, and again, anyone can be the applicant, but on our application, we asked for owner's name.
Yep.
And applicant's name, so.
And she did sign as president and treasurer, so. Any other questions for the board at this point?
The thing I see is that the office trailer and the house both have the same address to make a law.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Yes, it's always been the same.
The storage trailer's?
You know, the office trailer at the entrance of the property.
Is the one entrance, the one entrance, one exit? I forgot that one. We've got a number of questions on the table. We understand your desire to move this, to move this quickly. There seems to still be some questions. Asking for a temperature of the board at this point.
If we, if I can, just, just understand, if a vote's taken and the vote is in the negative, you can't come back for two years. Just understand.
I understand that. What, is there any more way we can clarify the concerns, Mr. Pereira? As Mr. Aguirre stated, the parking as it clearly stands now, there's enough parking in accordance with the, the bylaw.
Well, not for the marina use.
So.
For the boat storage use is what's shown on the plan. I've asked what the marina use is, because that's not shown on the plan. 32 spaces.
And then with regard to the, the overflow, we can have that clearly marked.
Correct.
For the additional parking with signage. Somebody brought up a, a question of signage. There is a sign that's been on North Main Street for O'Connell's Boatyard. It's been there so long, it's a faded red color. That's right at the entrance of Collins Street. We would also put a sign attached to that that says Danny's Dockside, so hopefully people would preferably use Collins. With regard to the, the marina parking, we can clearly mark that also. If the, if the board's inclined to make a motion in the affirmative this evening, then we'd like to proceed, but if the temperament of this board is to decline it, then we'd like to table it.
Well, you don't have that. That's for you to decide.
I know.
You're asking for vote, or you're asking the same?
I'm just, you know, playing my odds, you know? Just letting you know.
I think, I think that one of the questions is, we, we don't know what we're voting on.
We don't have a chapter section, we don't know whether we're going with bar, restaurant, we don't know if we're going under H, F, E, G. I've heard nine different things, so I, I think that, that is, needs to be clarified. The parking needs to be clarified on the plan. I know the chairman had some concerns about sightline and.
Police and fire.
Yeah, and we, engineers spoke about the police and fire, and access, and parking on the streets, and, you know, and there's, there's a number of questions that came up that I think would warrant some more information.
Okay, then at that point, we'd like to table.
Does that help?
Yep, it does, Mr. Frank. We'd like to table the petition, then.
Can we have a motion to table?
Motion.
Motion to table, please.
Patty, do you have a request to table from, are they over here?
They used to be on there, I don't know if it's.
Should know. On the motion, let's keep moving. On the motion to table.
Yeah.
Alexis?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chairman Purvis? Don't panic.
And then also clarify.
He's in eyes, okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah, they might not get the address.
They may not get the.
That's the assessor's office, they don't move too far.
That just keeps on getting passed along.
We can go by and say hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Item number two. Item number two, the applicant is Maria C. Mello.
Maria, Maria C. Mello.
Maria C., I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's not what you're reading, but that's okay. Care of attorney.
Quiet, please, we're still going, if we can get outside, please, thank you.
Care of attorney, George Brilliant, sorry. This is for Swan Street, map D-21, lot 51. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow the following. One, the existing non-conforming auto repair garage located on the property. And construct new single-family dwelling, waving lot area, lot frontage, front yard setback, side yard setback, and lot coverage requirements. Subdivide the existing parcel to convey one thousand feet of this, of his property to an abutting property. The property is located in an S single-family zoning district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Madam Clerk, Mr. Agia, for the record, Attorney Gregory Brilliant, with a law offset, 111 Oak Grove Avenue, Farver, Massachusetts. As the chairman rightfully stated, Ms. Mello, who's here before me, owns this entire piece of property. What she's looking to do is there is a, a former auto repair, auto towing facility, Flores Towing, that was in existence many years ago. And for historical purposes, back in nineteen ninety-three, one of the few, I think I was on this board.
And you admit it.
Here's a number of them. Be allowed for a subdivision, a subdivision was allowed, there's one for everybody, Mr. Chairman. A subdivision was allowed, allowing the single-family house, 321 Lake Avenue, and the existing towing business to be subdivided. Here's a picture of the house as it presently exists and the vacant towing business. At the time it was granted, it was allowed, and as you'll see on the plan, I think it's important to look at the plan, there was a line drawn. That was a jagged line, so to speak, at the time, which was done solely because of the shape and configuration of the towing business. And that's why it wasn't straight back at the time. What, what my client would like to do is basically reconfigure those lines, for that line to go straight back. Allow 321 Lake Avenue to stand in its existence, no changes, and to allow her to build a thirty-one by thirty-eight foot, single-family house, three bedrooms, two baths, on the newly created parcel A. With, with relative to the, to the, excuse me, the hardship in this, we have, we have an existing building that can't be used for a single-family home. It, it has to be raised, there's no question about it. So therefore, based on the actual condition of the, of the building and its, and its location on the lot, that is the hardship to have this particular petition attempt to try to make that a single-family house. In addition, I don't think, though, I don't think the actual neighbors would like that. Now, this is a single-family residential district, she proposes to build a single-family home, which will be consistent with the single-family residential district, and it's our contention that obviously it would be less detrimental to the neighborhood because it would be far more consistent than this vacant piece of property, which has been there for quite some time. And I'm sure that the neighbors down there, which is, the neighborhood has become quite built up, it's very, very nice, I was down there today taking the pictures, so I'm sure they'd be very happy to see a brand-new home. It's gonna be for a family member, at least it's contemplated as such at this time. But again, it'll be thirty-one by thirty-eight, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and basically that's it. If you have any questions, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to answer them, or Ms. Mello, and we have the person who's actually gonna be the builder here as well. Mr. Perry, Stephen Perry. So I'm sorry, there's gonna be two off-street parking places with the, with the new building and there's ample off-street parking for the, the existing 321 Lake Avenue.
I'll be honest, my heartburn is we're talking about five variances in order to do this. And in, in most communities, you, you might not even get this far with five variances. And I realize this, this is this community.
Are you talking, Mr. Chairman, about the setbacks?
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize.
We, we casually throw those around as waving, we casually throw those around, it's a variance, period. So whether it's two feet on the sideline or whether it's, you know, a big, you know, frontage variance, we're talking five here.
Mr. Chairman, while, while I do totally understand what you're saying, I think this is just a way, honestly, to try to really clean up the neighborhood. And, and because this, this building is just an eyesore to the neighborhood, it can't be used in its present condition for a single-family home.
No, I, I understand that.
Because the lots have already been created.
It's rundown, it's not attractive, it's not conducive to conversion, it's not like it's some cute little mill building that you could turn into something.
Yeah, it's not.
I get it.
We have to put what the purpose of the conveyance of the other.
To, to be honest with you, Mr. Clarkins, it's simply to make it more conducive. The only reason was divided the way it was is if you went out there, the current commercial building has all these jogs in it, so they kept it like that. This is only to try to make the lot more, you know, beneficial, so it goes all the way back and allows them to put that lot, excuse me, that house the way it is.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure like if the parking was moved over to there, whether or not you could move the house so that you can get rid of a couple of the variances.
We, we tried all we could to try to do that.
I'm sure you did.
And, and because we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna go in, obviously, and I always speak to Mr. Agia, we always try to limit the amount of relief that we ask, and I understand and appreciate what Mr. Pereira's stating. This is what we came up with with dealing with Mr. Tomlin, as the best possible plan to be put together to bring before the board. We obviously never try to put in relief that's not necessary.
Ms. Mello, is your residence at, at 321 Lake Ave?
It is.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could offer.
Yeah, please.
Some back history on this, is that, yes, we, we have two separate structures on two separate parcels that the use of the land was limited because they were connected to the same septic system that was behind the garage. A number of years ago, maybe within the last ten, I guess, City of Fall River installed water and sewer through Lake Avenue, Swan Street, eliminating all of those septic systems. Still a septic system behind this, behind this, this garage. So I think the existing structure, which actually encroaches onto the abutting property, over half a foot over the line.
It does.
The, the new building, although it is asking for setbacks, are far greater than the existing structure, so a drastic improvement over what the existing structure is. Theoretically, they could file just a special permit and turn that existing building, that footprint of that garage into a single-family dwelling. So this is eliminating those encroachments, how close that property line is, that building is to the property line and over it, reducing the amount of lot coverage by getting rid of that, that larger structure. So there, there's two sections of relief here. One, it's, it's creating that parcel B, which is the thousand square feet that you can look at separately. But I think as far as the use and getting rid of the non-conforming use and proposing a conforming use, that one should be, should be fairly simple. The lot is the lot, so they're not asking to subdivide to create a new lot, it already exists. So we're eliminating non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures, and getting closer to what the bylaw requires. With regards to the other thousand-square-foot parcel, parcel B, as Attorney Brilliant stated, it was created for the necessity of keeping the entire garage on one piece. And creating a straighter line, whether it's completely straight the way that it isn't going to the angle point in Swan Street, which may be where it originally started from, if we go back, you know, when these things were first created. Or do we pick a pivot point and split the difference or come up with a different way? It, it does make both parcels more regularly shaped by allowing that other conveyance.
Just looking into the future of whatever happens out here.
Yeah, Mr. Pereira, in, in case there was ever a conveyance, like you just said many, many times, it could go to somebody else's property. If we use that same building, Ms. Mello, technically, if that, 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 that building that presently exists was converted to a single-family home, somebody would literally be encroaching on her property right away, number one, and number two, looking right into her house, it's that close.
Yeah.
I mean, that, I know you read plans far better than I, but it's really, literally that close. That's why we tried to do this, to, to, we really were just trying to make it better for the neighborhood and, and obviously for Ms. Mello.
I mean, I'm looking at other lots in the neighborhood, you know, I took a drive down there, this building's gotta go. Would be nice if it could go. You got a lot of larger lots in the neighborhood, this is.
Yeah, much larger homes, nice, it's very nice down there. I hadn't been down there in years.
And I'm sure that, you know, if this gets approved, whatever's gonna be built here is gonna make things look far better out there. And it's set back, at least the structure is set back from their home, it's set back from the, the other neighbor. It's just an odd lot.
It is, it is. And we don't, we, we, we did ask for Mr. Agia's input in terms of trying to get this in, in, in the least obstructive way to the, to the board and to the city. We really did try our best.
Yep. Yeah. Okay, anyone else from the board, questions or comments? Nothing? To the audience, is there anyone here who would like to speak in support of this petition? No, anyone to speak in opposition to this petition? They're hearing none, it comes back to them.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant.
Second.
With separate utilities is gonna be.
Yes, yes.
That's already done.
Yeah, it has to be, Mr. Frank, because as Mr. Agia said, the septic doesn't.
Doesn't meet sight plan, right?
Yeah, no, it does, a hundred percent, yeah.
And Grant, as, as presented, with the separation of the thousand square feet to the, to the adjoining lot?
Yes.
Okay? If there's a second on that? Okay, motion and a second on that then, John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Jim, very yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you a builder? Are you a builder?
No.
No?
My boyfriend is.
Okay. Said you were gonna build it, I'm like.
She'll have plenty to say.
I'm not going in there. All right, item number three, applicant. Cavalo's Tire and Auto Center Inc., attorney, care of attorney, George Brilliant. Four, what?
That's okay, that's okay, I've been called much, much worse, Mr. Pereira, don't worry about that, trust me.
I grew up with a kid's yacht and they went by Brugiat, you know, for whatever reason, so.
Portuguese, that's, that's what Portuguese way is.
No, they were French, they were in a Portuguese neighborhood, they had no choice, ah, Brugiat. 410 Second Street, map I-19, lot 17. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow the following. One, eliminate condition number one, contained in a 2014 decision, which limits the towing of vehicles on the site Monday through Saturday from six AM to eleven PM. Ten, ten PM. The applicant requests to allow to tow vehicles at, to the site at any time. The property is currently being utilized as an auto body repair, sales, and towing storage facility. Property is located in the CBD Central Business Zoning District.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Attorney Gregory Brilliant, with a law offset, 111 Oak Grove Avenue, Farver, Massachusetts. I appear before you today on behalf of my client, Paulo Cavalo. Mr. Chairman, I think it's probably in your package that there, this again pertains to a previously granted variance back in 2014. And at that time, the petitioners were given permission to operate a towing business in conjunction with the auto repair and auto body shop. Mr. Cavalo has owned the property for four years and quite frankly, has had no issues whatsoever. He, he just recently got put on the towing list for the City of Fall River, and he wanted, really while we're here, is we wanted to really kinda just do this right. Because in speaking with Mr. Agia and with the city, my client technically, on a Sunday, could leave, could get a call, could go tow a car, but he technically would have to leave it sitting on his truck till Monday morning. He could do it, because towing, he, he has the right to tow, but he can't put it in his yard. So all we would like to do, and that's why we didn't try to change anything else, he still has six spaces onsite, six spaces inside the building, and he just wants to eliminate the, the requirement that he can't do it on a Sunday. And he's again, just trying to be totally forthcoming, because Glenn Hathaway, who's doing his job, had seen him one day pick up a car at the gas station on DeVall Street and said, well, where are you gonna go put it? You can't go put it on your property. And he called me right away, tried to do the right thing, we filed immediately. And that's what we're here for today, just to eliminate that one provision so he could tow seven days a week, and that's basically it. Relative to the neighborhood, just so everybody knows, because I want them to be clear, and on the back is everything, this is, this is up and down the street. Ah, you only got one car, this is up and down the street. And on the back of the, of the various businesses that are located right immediately abutting this property. So on picture one, I just go through what, what is around there, just so people know. It's not like he is, on, on picture one, there is the Ecuadorian Market, Central City Auto Sales, J and J Bird Supplies. Going the opposite direction, there's Farver Thread Level Up Bobby Shop. Further down on that same block, there is Corant's Temporary Agency, World Insurance, Farver Grill. On the other side of the street, they have Victor's Aesthetics, Cam Market, New Leaf Marijuana. So I, I only point that out because everywhere around him is completely commercial retail use. So in terms of what he's gonna be doing there, even on a Sunday, I don't think it's gonna bother anyone.
So the closest residential is the apartment building down the street?
That's, that's the closest residential, it's really, Mr. Pereira, the only residential within, I think, a two-block radius. If you go up Second Street, it might be a block radius when you go up the hill. But that's all, and, and again, he, he is really, he's a good guy, he's completely renovated that building since he's bought it. He bought the auto, auto body shop next door, he's done a very good job. He just wants to be a guy that does things on the up and up. I mean, he's paid the money to do this because he doesn't wanna just have that car on top of that truck overnight, he just wants to do it right. And so that's why it would be for the board in complete transparency to, 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 to what he would like to do without, you know, trying to circumvent what's happening there.
So you're looking at twenty-four-seven, you're looking at the ability to tow a vehicle and drop it in this yard, two-thirty on a Sunday morning at the.
If he gets a call, yes.
FRPG.
If my memory is correct, which it seldom is.
I don't know about that.
The original restriction was probably placed on there because it was all you needed at that time. It wasn't, it wasn't due to.
The previous owner.
It wasn't even this gentleman.
It was a previous owner, but I, I believe it's because at the time, it's probably all that was needed because they didn't have, wanna open and do it on a Sunday, quite honestly. I think that that's why they just put it from Monday to Saturday.
Condition that we imposed, I think it was a.
It probably wasn't gonna be utilized, quite honestly.
I think whoever presented it just wanted to get an approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could be the case. Probably never had any intention of towing anything at eight o'clock, until ten o'clock at night, I would say.
So I, I mean, I argued it then, I'll argue it again. The zoning ordinance deals with the stowing of a towed vehicle. It, it doesn't deal with towing vehicles, as Attorney Brilliant stated. So it, it's the storage part. And we don't have a definition of stowed, right? Is, is stowed, does it, does that classify a, a vehicle to be repaired? Or is it stowed that the police call and say, hey, you tow this vehicle and you go store it somewhere, right? So I think it's tow and store together.
I believe so.
We don't define that. So it's, I, I know it's been very ambiguous over the years of what kind of permitting do we need? So I, I think it's the space on the ground that allows for the storing of a towed vehicle, stowed, is really the relief. The activity of towing a vehicle is not even up for question tonight.
Yeah, you can tow it on the yard.
Either through this petition or, or one to come later, it's.
Can I take it off the truck?
You can put it on the lot.
Exactly.
And he's not trying to change the spaces, he hasn't had any issues whatsoever. He's been towing for a period of time right now, even with the city. He hasn't had any problems, no complaints from neighbors. Again, he, he got that call from Glenn on a Sunday and said, where are you gonna go put it? You can't go put it on your lot. So he, he got very nervous and he called me on this Sunday thinking he was doing something wrong. And I said, well, I think you're gonna be okay, but he just wanted to do this all correctly, so that's why it would be for the board, members of the board, quite honestly. He didn't wanna try to go circumventing and parking in front of his building overnight on a Sunday night and say, okay, I can do that, and then on Monday morning, take it off, put it in his yard.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, and maybe Attorney Assad can weigh in as well.
Objection.
No, because we, I, I know in the past, we've always talked about making sure that the vehicles are registered and insured. And I'm sitting.
Versus a junkyard.
Correct, but, but what I'm thinking is, what happens when the vehicle is towed?
Because it's unregistered.
Yeah, you can't.
Right, but that's the whole issue.
So when we condition these things, we have to take that into account of, how do we make sure that these are not junks and they don't stay here forever? That's, that's really what should be discussed. And to be honest with you, I don't know.
Yeah.
So I think that goes back to the planning board, and we change the zoning and get a board definite answer.
You make more work for me than.
No, no.
No, you're right, no, you're right.
You're absolutely correct, because there's number five this evening, there's this gentleman here dealing with it, and that's a topic that was entertaining me today about stowed vehicles. We had always discussed as to what registered, so you pick it up, but if it's not, then we say, there's not a place in the City of Fall River under our ordinance that allows, that allows for it. So everything is done by this board granting permission either by way of, it has to be by variance.
Right, yeah.
So that area, or what you do with them for unregistered cars that are dropped off, what do you do with them? They have to, they go to Tivon.
Well, I mean, and again, that becomes a problem, so, you know, the cops. Well, I mean, and again, that becomes a problem, so, you know, the cops, the cops do call for the tow of a car.
Yes.
They may not know it's registered or not.
You may, you may. You need to hear me say this, there's a guy on my street, he has a flatbed. Every morning, five out of seven days, there's this flatbed with a wrecked car waiting to go somewhere.
Yeah.
So I don't know where it's, but it has Tiverton plates where I live, so I'm assuming he's going to Tiverton.
It's on your street, though?
On my street. On my street, right. The other day, there were two of them.
For the sake of his neighbors, and honestly, for the sake of the car, I'd rather see it in stow than see it sitting on the back of a truck in front of your house all night long. You know, or wherever you leave it. You can pull it into the yard, you can't take it off the truck. So.
So this board, my last.
No, please, yeah.
This board is going to act as the city council of the planning board to make that determination what to do. What attorney Brilliant has said is absolutely true for this gentleman. What's he gonna do, is he gonna keep it in his yard, he wants to go a place to drop it?
I think it's much better.
He's gonna go park it on Dunbar Street.
Well, now that we know they're all doing it.
They let anything fly over there.
They let anything over there, so bring it down. You can park it at Diamond.
And they can fix it.
They're bothering, I know that's not the easiest thing for you, David, I know that.
Can't get it out to BCC, they get caught. No, seriously, I, so. Where does it say it's got to be registered and insured?
Doesn't.
It doesn't.
Doesn't. But it's just contemplated with making sure that we don't have a junkyard.
Right.
Is how do we make sure it's not a junkyard? But again.
But again.
We don't want to create more problems for ourselves.
Would it make sense to put a limitation on how long the cars could be stowed there?
That's not what we have to ask, if somebody wants to keep paying the fee, right, to leave it there, then.
He eventually owns the car, fixes it, sells it.
Yeah, he does, I don't think, I don't think that.
And then how long is the process, so if somebody doesn't pick it up in 90 days, and they, and the car is almost useless.
We, we usually send three letters to the, to the owner.
And then, and then what's the process for you to take title of it? How long does that take?
A year.
It's like three months.
I think you gotta, I think you gotta apply to the registry of motor vehicles, I did one a long time ago.
It's not easy, right?
No, 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 it's not easy, you have to, you do have to give certain notice under the statute, and then, and then, then you have to apply to, I think, to the registry of motor vehicles to allow them to allow you to sell it. Then you can sell it, and then you have to put the money aside or what have you to offset your towing bill.
I don't know, there's a lot of, to try to make it perfect, I think it would be very.
Can't make it perfect.
Define number on months or years.
I mean, we could put a date on it, who enforces it?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, anything is enforceable by the building inspector through the zoning board of appeals, but we don't need to give him more work to do. He doesn't need to come up with a way.
It could be issues than how long the cars were sitting in this man's lot.
Prevents these things from becoming junkyards, that's.
No, I understand that.
Well, you just limit, we're still limited to the same number of spaces.
Yeah, yeah, that's not changing.
Yes, he's not trying to change that. Not trying to do more, just, again, just trying to do the, honestly, do the right thing.
That handicaps him if he doesn't empty those spaces.
Correct. Well, he gets paid for them, no matter whether it's a car that's been there for six months or two days, so it's the same daily fee.
Let's go to the public and see what they say.
Oh, yeah, I mean, on this one, we're only, we're only being asked to get rid of one of the conditions.
Correct.
So if. You do have the ability to make new conditions.
We could make new, new conditions.
Yeah, that's fine, keep it, keep it in mind.
Go to the general public, anybody here to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, there being none, it's on our table. And as Dan has just said, they're asking for one condition to be, to be removed.
Is the, is the lot, the lot's not fenced now?
It is, it's completely fenced in and locked.
Completely fenced in now.
So the guy's car you towed can't just.
No, can't go in there.
Nope. Can't get in there.
I move, Mr. Chairman, I move the removal of your variance.
Second. What, oh, did you have any conditions?
Yeah.
I jumped.
Yeah.
Do you want to add any conditions?
I just didn't have the conditions, I kind of jumped.
Just keep it simple.
What do you want to add?
Discussion on the motion?
Yeah, just to point a clarification, so it's going to be seven days a week, 24 hours a day.
Yep.
Yes. That'll be eliminated. Correct.
Right.
So no restriction, no time restrictions.
But all conditions remain the same, still six vehicles inside, six vehicles outside.
Nothing else changes, it's just that one condition.
All right, then on the motion, John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Jim Curry, yes.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, thank you, everyone. Happy Easter.
Happy Easter. Rowley, number four. Applicant Zachary T. Decunha. This is on Buffington Street, map, I-24, lot 47, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow the following, one, raise the existing non-conforming garage located on a pre-existing non-conforming parcel, and construct a new single-family dwelling, wavy lot area, lot frontage, front yard setback, side yard setback, lot coverage requirements. Property is located in an A2 apartment zoning district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Haven't seen you in a while, Mr. Pror.
It has been a little bit.
Someone said keeps him busy these days.
They do.
Off that line, oh, you're not even on here, hi.
Yes, I, I'm pinch hitting on this one, I wasn't involved in the filing of the petition. For the record, attorney Thomas Killoran, law offices at 350 North Main Street, Fall River, Massachusetts. I represent the applicant, Mr. Decunha. As the chairman stated, we're here before you this evening with regard to a lot of land on Buffington Street. It's not vacant, I don't believe it has a street number, though, there's an existing, I believe, a two-stall garage that sits almost right on Buffington Street. It's maybe off, maybe about four or five feet or so. You can see on the plan, there's a shaded existing garage label that's on there. It's also situated probably about seven or eight feet from the westerly boundary line as well. What the applicant is proposing to do is to knock down what I would suggest to this board is a rather blighted structure that does not conform with zoning, and construct a single-family residence, as you can see, the residence will be set forth, excuse me, set back about 20 feet from the front lot line, which is a significant improvement over about the five feet that you have there today. Will maintain setbacks of nine feet on either side, which I understand doesn't comply with the zoning requirements, but is, provides, at least on the westerly boundary, a greater setback distance than what presently exists. Will be able to maintain the rear property setback. Currently, the lot coverage is, it's at 37%, and what is proposed is 37%, so there'd be no change with regard to the lot coverage, although, again, it's, it's not complying with the 30% lot coverage requirement. So again, we're dealing with a lot of land, about 5,000 square feet. If you look at the plan and the surrounding neighborhoods, some of the lots certainly are bigger, but if you go directly across the street, you're looking at a lot of land that's 4,100 square feet. Two properties down to the west, there's a lot of land there, that's 5,910 square feet. So this lot is not certainly out of the character of the neighborhood, you've got a mix of single-family and multifamily dwellings. It's providing for two off-street parking spaces, which complies with zoning, so I would suggest it alleviates any concern with congestion on Buffington Street. Again, taking a blighted property, putting a new home on it, and I would suggest to the board is certainly an improvement over what exists there today.
Yeah, that building is an attractive nuisance.
Surprised it hasn't burned down yet.
Hmm?
That's my neighborhood, I'm surprised it hasn't burned down yet.
It's on live TV.
It is my neighborhood.
I know. Okay, I have no questions on this, any questions from the board?
The only thing I'll add is that this law is, this proposal is almost exactly in keeping with what you've requested the A2 zoning district to become, which, to let you know, we are in the middle of that process before the city council, and there. So we're just, we're short two feet of frontage, one foot of side yard each, and the area is actually 48 square feet bigger than what we've recommended, so. Wait a little while, relief may be less, but.
Be interesting to know how this lot came about, it's almost like it was a family leftover at some point in time.
No, but originally, all of these neighborhoods were probably all made up of 48-foot wide lots. And groups of them get conveyed.
Yeah.
Over time, and some just, some just remain with the actual width, but.
My experience with some of these older, what they would do is they would do a subdivision with, again.
A bunch of flats.
Lots all the same size, 48 feet of frontage, about 5,000 square foot lot, and people would come along and buy two or three at a time, or one at a time, in I think a few of these cases. And so I think this one was kind of got, got left over through time.
Yep.
Going to the general public, anybody to speak in favor of this petition and support? Anyone to speak in opposition? Hearing none, it's with the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we group the variance as requested.
As presented, okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second, by Alexis. Discussion, they're hearing none, John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dan? Alexis?
Yes.
And Jim Curry, yes?
Thank you very much.
Attorney Colain, that might have been the fastest one yet, hadn't fallen, that's good. Did a great, great amount of prep.
Not so fast.
No, I'm not going.
One more. Number five, applicant Brian Mederos, care of attorney Thomas P. Colain. 35 Oak Grove Avenue, map L9, lot 52, the applicant is requesting zoning relief to allow the following. One, a variance to allow the applicant to stow towed vehicles at the property. Relief is required from section 82, attachment to table of use regulations of the city of Fall River zoning ordinance. Number two, a special permit to allow the stowed vehicles to be located within 10 feet of the street line, front and side, sections 86, 444B and 86, 445. The property is located in a BN neighborhood shopping zoning district.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, attorney Thomas Killoran, representing the applicant, Mr. Brian Mederos, who's sitting with me this evening. Property at issue is 35 Oak Grove Avenue, the lot's about 24,000 square feet, roughly 219 feet of frontage along Oak Grove Avenue. Presently, the property is being utilized as a automobile service station. They do inspection stickers, I think repairs, there's a car wash there, there are gasoline pumps, which I don't believe are operational at the present moment, but ultimately, I believe would be Mr. Mederos's intention to once again, put those back into business. We're here before you tonight to allow for the stowing of towed vehicles. Mr. Mederos operates Troy City Towing, he's been operating that on, off of Flint Street or on Flint Street for a number of years prior to him. I believe his father was, was operating the business, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mederos. But ultimately, Mr. Mederos would like to relocate his business to this property here, obviously, this provides him with greater opportunities to have his business thrive, to incorporate the automobile repair component along with gas and the car wash. We're certainly sensitive to the fact that where this property sits, it's kind of a mix of commercial and residential use, particularly along the rear of the property. There's a number of residences along the backside. If you, if any of you familiar with the property have had an opportunity to go by, there is some existing fairly large trees along the rear of the property. What Mr. Mederos would certainly do, and he has heard, I'm not sure if he heard directly from a neighbor or he heard through the owner of the property who's here this evening, Mr. Picard, that these, the neighbors like the trees there, and we understand that they like the trees there, we certainly wouldn't look to do anything to impact the natural screening that's there. But what Mr. Mederos intends to do is to plant a row of abreviations along the rear of the property line to provide some additional screening. I've also been in touch with, or I was contacted by attorney David Assad, who I believe represents the butter to the south, which is the existing commercial building. There's been a request, I believe, by that neighbor, that Mr. Mederos construct a vinyl, white vinyl, or I don't know about the color, but, a stockade fence in between those two property lines, so that'll be the southerly property line for the property at issue, the northerly property line for the property that sits on the corner of Bedford Street and Oak Grove Avenue. Certainly, attorney Assad can, can speak on behalf of his client, but I can tell you that Mr. Mederos is certainly committed to doing that and has no, no issues erecting that fence, as been requested. With regard to the business itself, the existing, you know, gasoline repair, car wash business, it's my client's intention to operate that from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., seven days per week, which I believe is consistent with the existing hours of operation today. As this board heard earlier, with regard to the towing and actual stowing of towed vehicles, there is no definitive timeline in terms of when that can happen. My client doesn't do what I'd call any private pay tow, he doesn't do toes for AAA. He's one of the 10 companies that's on rotation for the city of Fall River Police Department. That's strictly his towing business, and it wouldn't have an issue if the board restricted his tow operations to, to that, is I correct, Mr. Mederos? Just doing towing for the city, for River P.
It's all that would be stored there.
Okay. So, again, if he gets a call, sometimes it could be late in the evening. The way it would happen is, is Mr. Mederos resides in Westport, he keeps his tow vehicles at his home, he leaves from there, does pick up the towed vehicle. Obviously, he would like the ability to go to the property to drop off the towed vehicle. One of the things that he, he does currently, if he's after hours, he will disable his, any kind of backup alarms on his vehicles. If it's the middle of the night and, you know, he's got a, a, excuse me, a vehicle up on his, I'll call it, ramp truck, sometimes he'll just leave it there for the night, instead of taking it off so as to not, you know, cause any noise. And then when he gets there early in the morning, or in the morning, during normal business hours, he'll take the vehicle off. So again, it's his intention to be a good neighbor. Mr. Mederos has advised me that he hasn't had any issues from his Flint Street operation, which is in a heavily residential area with neighbors, very, in very close proximity to his property line, even, even closer than what we have in this particular section. Where the towed vehicles would be stowed is over on the northerly side of the property, it's kind of the graciated area, it's kind of L-shaped. There's a proposal for A, in 18, so 26 spaces there. I know there was discussion earlier about how long does a towed vehicle typically last at the site? So Mr. Mederos was able to educate me while that hearing was going on, because that's a very fair question. Typically, what happens, the vehicle comes in, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, they send out a certified mailing within six days. That gets sent back to them, or they don't get a response from them, they send out another certified mailing within six days, and then if they don't get a response at that time, there's a process for junking the vehicle, which I believe requires the publication in the newspaper and some additional steps. Or if they feel the vehicle has some, some value, then they can go through that process of trying to require title to the vehicle. Mr. Mederos advises that at most, a vehicle stays on the property maybe four months. That's at most. They certainly don't like vehicles to linger on the property, though. That means that they can't go and pick up cars, if they're full, then they get a call, they've got nowhere to go. So it's in his best interest, just like I think it would be any company's best interest, to turn these vehicles over to get them off the property. If they don't do that, then they're going to be hamstringing themselves and they can't continue to operate. So, I mean, again, what we'd like to do is, again, keep the existing use in place, but just have the opportunity to store towed vehicles on the site.
Okay, I mean, my concern right off the bat is there's a lot of residential in the neighborhood, and, you know, we're talking having cars stowed right up to, right up to the front and side lot lines, to the north and west lot lines. To not have to do that, to push it back, obviously, you wouldn't have 28 spaces, you'd lose spaces. Curious, how many do you have on Flint now, how many spaces do you have there?
So he, he has 20, 20 spaces over on the Flint Street property.
Are you going to maintain the operation at Flint as well?
No.
No?
So you've got no backup?
It, it fluctuates. Sometimes they'll go fast, so there's months we have three or four sitting there. There's months, like right now, they're doing a lot of unregistered untrains. So it goes up and down, sometimes we get three or four, sometimes we get 10.
But to answer, I think the chairman's question was, how many spots do you have there, there's 20 spots there. Right, right now, I, to, in full disclosure. Right now, in full disclosure, if you went by, it's pretty close to capacity right now, again, because as Mr. Mederos explained to me, that the city, that the PD kind of has a movement right now to try to get unregistered vehicles off the streets. So right now, I would say that it's a little bit busier than typically is. Like I said, there are going to, like he said, there are going to be periods where you may just see a few vehicles there. It really, it really does fluctuate. With regard to the actual storage of the vehicles, and I certainly understand the chairman's point, there is a buffer on the rear of the property, so we're not going right up to the property line with the storage of the vehicles. And again, Mr. Mederos is committed to certainly keeping the existing vegetation, but doing some planting in between those trees with some abrevieties to provide some additional screening. And I think that'll provide some really good buffer, a really good buffer, especially visually, for the properties to the rear. And then when you take a look at the northerly side of the property, those cars would be right up against Oak Street there. I happened to travel over there today just to kind of have the property fresh in my mind. That's kind of a, I would call kind of a sleepy side street. I was a little bit surprised when I turned on it as to how quiet it is. So I don't, I would suggest to the board that having the vehicles in close proximity to...
Well, it's both Oak Grove and BD.
I meant to say BD, I apologize. To BD, it wouldn't have a significant impact on a neighbor is what I would suggest to this board.
So all of the vegetated border to the north is going to be removed back up to that outbuilding in the back?
So, so when I went out to the property today, and again, I drove around, that fifteen-feet-wide vegetated buffer, I don't know how...
No, he means on BD.
On BD.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. Yeah, so whatever exists...
Right now, the existing parking lot looks to be about fifteen feet off of the right way.
Right. I apologize. I thought you were talking about the rear of the property, Mr. Frank.
Yeah, no, I was talking about the...
Yes, it would go virtually right up to the property line.
What kind of fencing around the stowed vehicles?
It'd be a chain link fence, the roll-away chain link fence. I questioned him on that as well.
Privacy slats?
I'm sorry?
Privacy slats or just open chain links?
Yes, yes.
And I'm assuming only because it doesn't show a gate, there'll be no access coming from BD Street?
No access from BD Street, absolutely. That's correct. Only way to access that stowed vehicle area would be from onsite, yeah.
But only the stowed vehicle area is fenced, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So is that, is the rolling section of that pretty much where this drive is shown, over that concrete pad, which was...
Yeah, they're showing two rolling gates.
There's two rolling gates there.
Yep, got it, got it. Okay. All right. Other questions from the board? Going public. Anybody here to speak in support of the petition? Anybody to speak in opposition to the petition? Yes, Ms.? Just name an address, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is George Chievo. I live at seven hundred Shore Drive in Fall River. I'm here as a very proud resident of the City of Fall River, and very proud for the development and the accomplishment of the men and women of Fall River who have brought Fall River such a long way in the past twenty years. And again, that's facilitated by the CBA, because you evaluate and you determine which exceptions to approve and which not. I drive by that corner, Oak Grove Avenue and Bedford Street almost daily, because I have family members who live there, so I can drive by there almost every day. And again, I am aware that the petitioner is a very good person, and a very good family, and is a very good member of the business community in Fall River, so I'm not doubting that. However, I strongly oppose to their petition for variance in this neighborhood, which is designated as a business neighborhood zoning district. And I also strongly oppose that in the event that variance is granted, that there's special permit to allow stowed vehicles to be placed within ten feet from the front yard, which would be Oak Grove Avenue, and ten feet from the side yard versus the thirty-five feet as required by the zoning ordinance. Now, the definition of stow, aren't we lucky these days, right? So Oxford English Dictionary says stow means primarily refers to the verb, meaning to put something away, store it, or pack it away in a safe place. So, Dan, I hope I answered that.
Well, I asked what our definition was in our ordinance, because it could be completely opposite to that, but that's, that's something.
I know David Assad mentioned that, however, the reality is, if they bring in a registered vehicle, the registration can expire within a month. And earlier today, Tony Kellorn referenced what happens to junking the vehicles. So in reality, this will be a junkyard. Maybe not today, maybe not tomorrow, but just like the prior petitioner, in five years, they're going to come back asking for something else. And in this neighborhood, this is the absolute worst neighborhood. Fall River is a city which has many good places for this petitioner, who again, is a good person, good family, good business, member of the community, to relocate their business. And again, I drove by three thirty Flint Street. I drove by Troy City. It's not the same street as thirty-five Oak Grove Ave. It's not the same feel. It's not the same neighborhood, okay? So I hope that answers your question. Now, the thing is, the zoning district, I'm trying to a little show me how. This is a zoning map. I did anything right last minute, so I asked for your locations here, but this is a zoning map, and this here is zoning, the zoning area business neighborhood district. And this little area is the corner where the three unit plaza is, and right next door is the subject property, thirty-four Oak Grove Avenue. As you can tell, this business neighborhood district is a very, very, very narrow, limited area, which basically encompasses Bedford Street. All around it are zoning areas that are either S, which is the white areas, single-family residences, or the T, N, G, for general residences. So this junkyard will be completely surrounded by residential areas, completely surrounded. So I do have an exhibit for the board in eight by ten form. Can I please ask that you accept that? And two, as an exhibit, Mr. Chair? I marked it as an X. I didn't have a mark, I apologize, at the very last minute. Okay, so, again, I'm very happy with our neighborhood, and as you, the CBA, as you know, first hand, there's been a lot of newly constructed single-family homes in that area, specifically Oak Grove Avenue, a few blocks down, London Street and BD Street. Brand-new, single-family homes. And now you're going to put a junkyard there. And Assad, you're granting that use, that variance, you're going to allow the stowing, S-T-O-W, stowing of vehicles ten feet from the street instead of...
Can you do me a favor, because if you say junkyard one more time, I'm going to make you stop.
No, no problem.
He is not here for a junkyard. And as you saw from a previous petition, because you've been here for the entire evening, Mr. Hathaway stopped another gentleman in the same business from taking something off, or he didn't stop him from taking off his truck. The city watches these things, all right? So if approved, whatever is imposed as, as conditions for the approval is not going to include being a junkyard. So there are protections for that. So it's a cool tactic, not here. Stock on a junkyard, please.
All right, thank you. So again, but if you stow the vehicles ten feet from the road, that approaches more upon the neighborhood field, the residential field of the neighborhood, okay? If you do grant this variance, at the minimum, I would say there'd be a vegetative order in the front on Oak Grove Ave, because that's where there is more traffic versus BD Street, which there is no entrance, okay? And like I said, that whole area is, you know, we've done great strides. Now, we do need the petitioner's business. We do need them, and they're good business people. However, this area is not the best area. This, this variance will derogate from the intent and the purpose of the zoning ordinance, and, and such a variance will, will take away from the Oak Grove Avenue neighborhood. Again, I believe they're a great business member of the community. I appreciate their investment in the community. We want their investment, and I hope you find a suitable location for the business, but this is not, this is not the area. Now, if you look at the zoning bylaws, stowing vehicles is not allowed by right in any zoning district at all, which means that places a heavier and more, a heavier burden or responsibility on this board to determine where are the right locations to place such vehicles. With that, I just, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Go to the inside.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is David Assad. I'm an attorney licensed to practice in McCombe, Oklahoma, Massachusetts. I maintain offices at three twenty-six Pine Street in the City of Fall River. I'm here this evening on behalf of my client, Broadway Properties. And he's the, it is the individual or the entity that owns the property at the corner of Bedford and Oak Grove Avenue, direct the butter to the south, to this property. I understand, we've talked about stowing the vehicles, we've talked about the use of the property. Certainly, they need a variance, and that's up to this board, and I defer to the board's knowledge and expertise in understanding whether or not attorney Kellorn in this particular property meets that burden, and so I'm not going to belabor that point. You all know how to make that determination. The property, stowing the vehicles, is not allowed in any district in McCombe, in the City of Fall River under our ordinance. The owner of Broadway Properties, because this particular area that's going, looking to get developed for the stowing of vehicles is at the opposite end, his only request was, to Mr. Kellorn was correct, was to put up a six-to-eight-foot vinyl white fence that separates the property, that it's not really allocated, so it's not seen on his property. Very personal to his own ownership and development. But as I was listening to this conversation this evening, and I know it's not the board's job to legislate, but if the board is inclined to grant the variance, then maybe one of the conditions should be the twenty cars or something on Flint Street be eliminated as part of it, so you end up cleaning one part of the Flint neighborhood with the stowing of vehicles. You're not having, if it's going to be, it's going to be on this Oak Grove Ave and BD Street property. But other than that, is, I'll leave it to the board's discretion to figure out what to do. Grant a variance, has he met the burden, has he not met the burden? There are those residences to consider, but that's the only input that I have at this point in time. Thank you. Thank you.
To the hardship.
So I think you're dealing with a piece of property that, and I certainly don't mean to besmirch Mr. Picard who's here, and I think he's, as he told me out in the hallway, has been working at this property since he was thirteen years old. The property certainly could use a facelift, so to speak. I think that in the area where the stowed vehicles are, it's a little bit rundown over in that area. I would suggest to the board that what my client actually is going to be doing would be an improvement to what exists there at the property right now. Again, with the chain link fence, with there being slats in it, it's not something that's going to be visible from the roadway. He's committed to putting screening along the, just the easterly rear property line. He's committed to putting the screening as requested by the neighbor along the southerly property line. I think attorney Assad's suggestion makes sense. My client is perfectly willing, if the board wanted to condition this approval upon the Flint Street property no longer being utilized for tow and stow, so to speak. That's something that he's perfectly agreeable to. But again, I think what you're, what you're dealing with, again, it's a tough situation, because this is a proposed use that's not allowed anywhere in the city, but obviously, it is occurring in a few different places throughout the city. I would suggest that allowing this use allows this applicant the highest and best use of the property. Again, he wants to make a go of the existing business that's there. He's certainly going to make improvements to it. There is going to be a significant cosmetic facelift to that property. There's going to be an overall beautification to that property. But he certainly doesn't want to give up his existing business that he has now. And again, I would suggest that, given his commitment to protecting the neighbors, being a sensitive business neighbor to them, I would suggest that to the board that his request this evening is reasonable.
And again, what is the hardship that requires this variance? Not just for the use, but for the proximity to the, you know, coming up to the, basically, the property line?
So, so stowing the vehicles up near the property line is part of the special permit request? So I would suggest to the board that it's not substantially more detrimental to allow that use. Again, we're going to have screening that, you know, shields the vehicles from people that are going along Oak Grove Ave or BD Avenue or BD Street, excuse me. So the standard certainly is lesser for a special permit, as this board knows, as opposed to the granting of a variance. And I would suggest to this board, and I understand every petition stands on its own merit, so I'm... I say this cautiously, but that's relief. I think that's very commonly granted, especially with businesses.
So the abutters to the rear, which are, which are obviously residential?
Yes.
Was there any discussion with them? You talked about, you know that they like the tree buffer that's between now. So have you had discussions with them? I'm surprised none of those neighbors are here tonight. I guess that's the thing that's standing out in my mind right now.
My client did receive a phone call from an abutter. He is not certain as to who that individual is and not one-hundred percent certain as to where they live. They had questions about his proposed use, what he was going to be doing there, or what he was proposing there. He explained that to the abutter, and as the conversation wore on, he got the indication from that abutter that they were pleased with his responses in terms of what his commitment was to providing some screening for the abutters. With regard to the existing trees that exist there, that's information that my client got from Mr. Picard, the current owner. It was my client's first intention to think, hey, well, maybe I'll take these trees down and just put a full row of abrevieties in the rear. Mr. Picard indicated that a lot of those neighbors like those existing trees, that they're fairly large, but obviously, the leaves fall off in the wintertime. What my client would be committed to doing, and again, he'll defer to what the board prefers, is doing implanting in between those trees, or again, he can take them down and make a full evergreen hedge. But again, he certainly doesn't want to do something that he knows that his neighbors, if they like them, he doesn't want to disturb that.
Now, is your client going to be leasing this entire property?
He's going to...
Potentially buying it?
Buying it. He has it under agreement to purchase.
Okay, that's fine. So it would be auto service, but possibly a filling station at some point?
Correct.
Okay. And the tow business?
Right.
And the car wash.
Car wash is...
And the car wash.
Yeah, you're going to kick that car wash back in?
It's his hope, too.
It's still, it's still operatable.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, he's still using it.
That's right. I did notice cones there for a pathway to get in there today.
Ten dollars a wash. I saw that today myself as well.
Sorry, we interrupted you.
The only thing we're looking to change is to store vehicles. And again, the faster we move them, every single owner's spot is considered real estate to us. If a vehicle's sitting there and it's not doing nothing to me, it's not making us money.
Right.
But when they're junk, they go to the junkyard. They're just there to storage until the owner's going to come for them, or they got to be off their streets. Nothing stays there.
So the towing you're doing for the city, is that mostly for vehicle removals?
It's accidents, sir.
It is accidents as well, so you got to bring it in wrecks, okay.
And snow removal, do they have a special place you take them to, or would that be...
Snow removal goes, goes there. Anything to do with the four-up we spawned, that's what would be useful.
I mean, at times, though, just so the board is aware, not every vehicle that he picks up and tows for the police department actually goes back there. Sometimes, if it was, say, for a DUI, it may be going back to the police station. Sometimes people on site say, you know, this is my auto repair shop, please take it there. So they don't, they don't all come back here.
Yep.
Yeah, I want to have a preference the way they want their vehicle. Yeah, I want to have a preference to where they want their vehicle.
Okay. All right, so you're dealing with accidents and removals.
Correct.
So, okay. Somebody parks across the end of somebody's driveway, no.
We don't do prior.
If the police are, no, I'm saying if the police.
Only if, yeah, only if it's a call from the police department.
That's fine. Dan, you have anything on this?
Just call to your attention that variance for use, one request, special permit with regards to the proximity to the street. Days of hours of operation, I think have been spelt out today. I have concerns about the special permit part of the request, as we'll be removing the existing heavy vegetated screening along BD, and that does provide screening for the residential property across the street that is improperly noted on the plan, because they also have it listed again as Broadway Properties in the same map and lot, but it's actually owned by someone different, but it is a residential property. So screening for the residential properties is a concern. Beyond the screening, bringing that fence out to Oak Grove Avenue and BD creates a sightline distance as well with, with people coming up to that intersection. So now you'll, you will, you will see nothing. So I can't say that I would actually recommend that reduction in getting for the special permit. We can deal with things like new screening, new fencing, as, as some of the butters have asked for. They've answered their questions about no access to BD Street. This is an opportunity to, to make site improvements, and this board can condition it, the approval in any way it sees fit. It can require interior landscaped islands, it can, the hatched area, for instance, in between the parking spaces and the car wash, that could be curbed and, and landscaped. So there, there are different things that you could do. Closing some curb cuts, adding some, some green space along that Oak Grove Avenue section where the special permit is being requested to be up against it. So I don't think you should close your mind to what potential there is to make improvements, but you, you do have to listen to what, what neighbors' concerns are and how the property as a whole will be handled. Every other use on this property allowed by right in the zoning district.
Correct.
The parcel itself, completely complying to the zoning district. So, so there is no variance currently acting or operating on this piece of land.
Correct.
This would be the first. So we have a completely conforming parcel, we would now be making it non-conforming, which is not something that the board normally looks favorably upon, but this is with regards to use, not subdividing or anything like that.
I, I personally do not have, and I'm just going to say it, I personally do not have a problem with a stow. I don't. My problem is coming up to the lot lines.
Yeah.
And you just mentioned.
Because theoretically, if it's just repairing of vehicles, he could go pick up my 1984 Jeep Wagoneer that needs to be fixed.
Yeah.
And it could sit in that same piece of pavement for six months.
Right.
Falling apart. So the vehicle, on the real estate, it's, you know.
Could I, could I maybe?
I think the question is coming down to the number of spots.
So, right, so, so as, as Mr. Aguirre was, was speaking, and I think I've heard from a few of the board members tonight, right now he's, he's got 20 spots. So as proposed, and when I'm talking about Flint Street. So what we're proposing here is, is 26. I think it was Mr. Frank that first brought it up, was the vegetation along BD Street. What we would, would suggest to the board, and what Mr. Maderas is certainly willing to do, would be to eliminate those, so.
Forests.
The forest spaces that run along BD Street there. And that, that'll allow for some of the natural vegetated buffer to remain, and he can certainly do some implanting there. But if we eliminated the ones that were up close to Oak Grove, then it's going to start to take him below that, where, what his capacity is now.
Well, it would be on existing, so if you look at the spots out near Oak Grove.
They're, they're on the existing pave.
One of them is borderline, but one of them is not. So, so you could theoretically shift everything either 10 feet or onto existing pavement and maybe reach, realot where you're putting the, I don't think the number of spaces is, is a question. So maybe it's 26, maybe it's 30. Maybe you can look at, can I creep even further into the lot?
In, only in here.
So the actual number, I don't think is the big deal. It's, it's not, it's where you're putting it.
Yeah, we certainly didn't want to go further to the rear. We wanted to respect the butters to, on the backside.
But even at that, you, you have space on the existing asphalt, so you're, you're showing 15 foot wide vegetated buffer. That's to the end of the existing asphalt. You could slide one, two, three, four, five, six, almost seven spaces further west to the edge of the asphalt, still providing the vegetated buffer, and that'll give you some more room up front as well, so.
You're talking about also sliding some of those front spaces.
Shifting them around entirely so that they fall on the existing pavement, so all existing screening can remain. And when they were not.
The, the issue that Mr. Maderas is pointing out to me, if we shifted things over to, I guess it'll be a southerly direction, is, is the underground tanks for the, for the gasoline is there. And I, I guess there are some issues about putting fencing over that, is, is that right?
Yeah, I don't think you want to drill in there to put fence posts.
I know, but, but that would actually, sliding what I'm telling you to slide westerly, sorry, easterly, is going to remove that front row of spaces off of that area. The back, the back two bays, the 18 spaces. I mean, you're the one that's trying, you know, it, it's five pounds of cars in a 10 pound bag. So where, where you put them, it has to work for you, but with the understanding, I, I would think that with the direction of not being on the special permit and getting rid of that buffer, maybe you want to take a shot at, at redrawing this, but that's, that's up to, I don't know what your time, time restraints are.
Just what they're saying, I think, is if they'd like to set a different plan, would you try to move some of the parking spaces? Would you have to move as soon as possible?
Because what might happen, I don't want you to say we can live with 20, and then maybe you could have gotten more, if the engineer drew it a little bit differently.
Yeah, I mean, he's under a bit of a, a tight timeline from a, from a closing perspective.
Well, this board can, can, could grant a condition on, you know, not granting the special permit, giving you a number of vehicles in that area, you know, not to go beyond the shaded area, if you can live with, with those conditions, and then you get what you get. Or to take the time, and maybe you get a few more spaces, if, but if you don't have the month to do it, then you don't have the month to do it. So I, I understand that end of it as well.
Yeah, so just i- in terms of the, the buffer, so that the, the bylaw calls for a 10-foot setback.
Correct.
And I think we can, we would be able to maintain that on the, what I call the.
Easily. You could actually extend the pavement still, because that first space is only nine, and you've still got room yet to the pavement.
On which side?
On, on the BD Street side.
On BD Street, yeah. And, and that's, I think my, that's my greater concern, is the BD Street side.
So, oh yeah, you've got a small plan.
And it would, that would be eliminating four of those spaces, or shifting this and you can maintain the number.
BD, this is a nine foot space, from this dash to this dash. So from the property line, 10 feet, this is more than a foot. So you're probably, 10 feet, you're probably going to be in here, okay? Pavement is already here. So this pavement can still now come out to there.
Right.
So now, so your spaces will begin there. These spaces can come up to this line, or add a 15 foot offset, or whatever that vegetated buffer needs to be. So these can shift. You're going to lose one, two, three, four. This one, because when you look at the 10, you can probably fit this one. So yeah, you're going to lose one, two, three, four.
Right.
And then you're on pavement.
And that's what we're comfortable with?
Yeah.
We're comfortable with that.
So you can withdraw the special permit, if you want to do that.
But, but I still need it for Oak Grove Ave, don't I?
No, well, it's going to fall on existing pavement, or you can limit the special permit to just deal with that, because that's on existing asphalt. So that's.
I, I understand what you're saying.
That's why, it's always easy to get a cleaner plan, but I understand we don't want to.
Yeah.
We, we want to fix it now.
But I, but I, I guess, I think.
Or just the elimination of the spaces then.
Not to split hairs, so it would be, we've got to maintain the 10 feet on the BD Street side.
Yep.
But I, I think we still need to ask for this special permit.
You do, yeah.
On the Oak Grove side, and, and that, if that's something that the board would entertain.
But that is paved at this point.
No. Oh, in the front, yeah. Oak Grove Avenue is paved, yeah.
I think the whole lot is paved.
It's not the way the plan shows, and it shows all.
The trees grew through the, the pavement.
Then you should have your survey every draw the plans, but.
But we're, we're comfortable with the, the 10 feet on the BD Street side, and would ask for the special permit.
Is it paved to the fence? Is your property paved to BD Street, the parking lot?
It's all vegetated along BD, right? It's all trees.
Vegetation on that side.
Yeah, it's paved there.
But it's all trees. It's all trees. So nobody's using it.
No, no, right now it's like, the trees are grown through the cracks.
But, but I, but I, what we're suggesting to the board is, we would maintain the 10-foot requirement under the zoning ordinance along BD Street. We'd ask for the special permit along Oak Grove Avenue, which, again, is, is already paved out and there isn't vegetation growing through that pavement.
But Oak Grove Avenue up to the 10-foot offset of BD, because at some point they're going to intersect. So you're either calling it BD or?
Ye- yes.
For the entire length of BD.
For the entire length of BD.
Yes, to me, that's, that's, that's a major step. Anybody else's questions on this or comments on this? Everybody following what we're trying?
Yeah.
Okay. And you'll get a bill for design services, so.
No more than 24 spaces?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That sound right? Or am I 26, 22?
26 minus four, 22.
All right, 22.
That's where it's at. Any other questions, comments? If not, we have to decide with, we have to lead with, do we want to give a variance on this, and what are the conditions of the variance? And then the special permit, we have to, we would have to allow the stow, otherwise the special permit doesn't mean anything. And if we allow the stow, what are the conditions under the special permit?
Let's take the first one and I move approval of the variance for use.
Any conditions on fencing?
Should the conditions go on the variance? Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah, because that's, because some of the fencing has nothing to do with the special permit aspect of the thing.
Let's see, maintaining vegetative border in the, whatever, north of the property, the establishment of a fenced border on the west and south of the.
No, the entire, the entire area where, where stowage would take place would be fenced.
Yeah.
Right, but the perimeter of the property, second above.
The perimeter fencing.
Between the Broadway Properties area, of fenced area.
That's a separate.
Yeah.
And then we also had the fencing or the vegetated border on the east side.
On the rear, 15 foot wide in the rear.
Yeah. Along, that, that one we got, we got one on the east also between, on the Bedford side.
No, there's no vegetative border to the.
Well, not vegetative, but that was the request, yeah.
Six foot white vinyl fence is what was requested, is that right?
Requested on that.
Yeah.
And that's between Broadway Properties.
Yeah.
So that's the south end of the property.
I would wrap that around the corner to the end of.
Yes.
The building line or asphalt line, where that existing stockade fences, just because we don't know the condition, but aesthetics, wrap that corner.
Let's make sure we don't, let's make sure we don't bring that all the way down to the street line on Oak Grove Ave, because you'll have an impediment of view when you're trying to come out of the, trying to come out of the car wash and turn, if you're going to be turning to the south.
Attorney Assad, how far down that property line would you like to see the fence coming down to Oak Grove Avenue?
Mr. Aguirre, I'll leave it to you as the direct engineering, how far, so you don't, because that's true, you don't want to have an impediment.
I'd say.
Of cars exiting.
I'd say you want, you want to leave at least 10 feet from Oak Grove Avenue so that you can see traffic coming from the left as you pull out of the car wash.
Yeah.
It looks, it looks to be about 20.
Okay.
And up to the corner of the car wash.
Yeah, that, that's the back a little bit more than 10, but that's fine.
Yep.
If the longer the butters are okay with it.
Let's go with the 10 feet. Coming all the way back to the car wash, that's going to be 20 feet.
We don't want to set up a, you know, automobile, I don't want Brian Coonery in company to be standing there for cars to get hit.
Do we have, discuss hours of operation?
They offered it.
Yes, so eight, eight to five, seven days a week.
For the regular business.
For the regular business operation.
So that's all the car washes going to be open?
Yes, car wash will be open.
Oh, only, only eight to five?
Yes.
Eight to five, seven days.
Well, whatever, I don't know what the hours are.
Hang on, we're all over the place right now.
That, those uses, existing uses have no, have no.
Correct.
Limits, and there's no relief being requested. You know, the only hours of operation to be discussed should be what the variance is related to, which would be the, the stowing part.
Stow.
So what are we looking for, for stow?
24/7.
24/7.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just wanted to hear it.
This is most complicated.
No, it isn't.
Well, it would be easier with a revised plan, and then we could just say in accordance with the plan, but we don't have that. We're not giving, we're not afforded that luxury tonight.
Are you getting rid of Flint Street?
Excuse me?
Are you getting rid of the Flint Street?
They had offered that, yes, so.
I mean, how can we put restriction on another piece of property?
It's really licensing, but it was, it was offered.
Yeah.
You could take it for whatever it's worth.
There's nothing to say that somebody else isn't going to come in, take that over, and use it for stow. We can't control that.
My only question was whether that was done by, was done by.
We don't know. It was never offered to us where he was operating until just now, so. Even if, even if he does away with, he doesn't have the ability to deal with the real estate in a way.
Yeah, I just.
So he may not rent that piece anymore, but that doesn't preclude someone else from renting it, so.
In this spirit of full disclosure, so they own the property, they've since sold it, they have a temporary lease there that's expiring.
Okay.
Until they can find another location. His understanding is the person that's going to be utilizing the property is going to be doing some kind of like auto body repair or something like that there. But I, I.
Are you going to represent him, come back in? I understand.
As long as he's not coming back for stow.
Okay, so we have a motion on the variance. That is all over the place, but.
Yeah. The motion on the variance, conditions of that variance would be, maintain the vegetative, a 10-foot vegetative border along the BD Street side of the property.
10 foot.
Right, 10 foot wide.
We're going to keep the setback to 10 feet. Fencing around the property will be of chain link with privacy slats.
For the stowed, for the stowed area, not around.
In the stowed area, yes. Do we condition right now the number of spaces at 22?
Yep.
22 spaces.
White vinyl fence.
White vinyl fence along the southern side.
Southern side of the property gets a, a white vinyl fence along.
Broadway Properties there, section.
That's Broadway Properties structure, that fence not to come any closer than 10 feet from Oak Grove Avenue for visibility exiting the car wash.
And along the easterly boundary to the edge of pavement.
Easterly, easterly boundary, we maintain the trees that are existing.
No, no, they're along this end. Come up the white fence.
Yep.
Then, then bang, go north along the edge of that pavement. There, there's no, because there's no vegetation there.
Okay, all right. So right around the back of the car wash then?
Exactly, just to make an L, of the same type of fence.
You don't have a problem with that?
No.
Okay. So that extends in an L probably going about 30, 40 feet to the north. Maintain the vegetative buffer that exists to the, to the east. Would you still add arborvitae to that?
To the back property, yes. Yeah, I want to clean it all up.
Okay, so maintain and improve with arborvitae, the vegetative border that exists to the, to the east side of the property. That small outbuilding, is that staying there, or is that coming down? What's in that? You don't know, is that, yeah?
Once we get to it, the way it looks like, it might be coming down. That's the owner.
What's in that little, the shed out in the back corner?
We used to store oil there.
Got it.
Oops.
Is it still existing?
Yes, yeah. It needs a roof.
It needs some TOS.
Needs a roof.
So there's a good chance that won't be there anymore, Mr. Chairman.
Does this need site plan?
Yes.
Yes.
What else am I missing on this? I shouldn't even be writing these things.
I mean, if we had a revised plan, no, but at least through site plan review, we can memorialize everything on a piece of paper.
How can we require that a revised site plan, our plan be presented for-
Who's it going to be presented to?
To the site review committee.
Well, that's site plan review.
Yeah, I know, but that they have to give you a new plan.
No, no, the motion is, it's going to be filed for site plan review, so he has to give a plan through that process.
And the plan can reflect these conditions.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. That's the intention, is to have a plan somewhere-
Yes.
Some authority that memorializes these conditions.
Do we have all this?
You're good.
Second.
The reefer chicken scratch, but it's all-
Call me.
That's where videos are filmed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Very good.
Who's that going to do, John?
John. And on the motion, are there any questions on the motion before we move forward? Alexis? Dan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim Furry, yes?
Special permit.
Special permit.
Perforated?
Yes.
Make a motion to grant that this is not more detrimental to the neighborhood?
With the removal of the four spaces along BD.
No more than 22 and 10-foot, do we have to do the 10-foot border on this as well?
Yeah, because you're modifying, the special permit request was to do it all, so now you have to modify it in some form or fashion. So that the special permit be granted along Oak Grove Avenue to the 10-foot offset of BD, something to that effect.
Eliminating the four spaces and keeping a 10-foot vegetative border along BD.
Northern edge, along BD Street.
Along BD, the full continuous length of BD, all the way to Oak Grove Ave.
We'll never get anything to grow where the oil building was. Motion and second, any discussion on the motion? John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.